Boston's zoning board of appeals hearing for September 27th is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature regarding virtual hearings. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings through March 2023. This hearing on the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. The hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access the hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for commenting, connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notice page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they have the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments in support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You may press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first before they provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting and host will not note a call on you at the appropriate time. These instructions may be repeated throughout the hearing. Today's board consists of six members, one less than a full board. As a result, if any applicant would like to wait until a given member, until a seven-member board is seated, you can seek an administrative deferral. My name is Mark Erlich, and I am serving as acting chair today because our regular chair, Christine Aragio, resigned from her post on Sunday. Given her 20-plus years of service, I feel it is appropriate to read portions of her letter to Mayor Wu at this meeting. I have had the honor of serving on the city's zoning board of appeals upon appointment by the late Mayor Menino. It has been a privilege to continue during Mayor Walsh's administration and more recently yours. It is with mixed emotions that I must resign, effective immediately, from the zoning board of appeals, as my personal and professional life have offered me new opportunities where the demands directly conflict with board meetings and attention to board-related matters. In my years on the board, I've had the opportunity to serve with colleagues who have displayed uncommon commitment to the city and our neighborhoods and who are unrecognized for the unseen time spent before a board meeting prior to making a decision. Once again, thank you very truly yours, Christine Aragio. I want to publicly thank Christine for her knowledge of urban planning, zoning regulations, and love for our city. We have been a better board for her leadership. As people may know, this is a period of transition for the board, with many of us leaving soon and others preparing to assume these roles. I've had the good fortune personally to be a member of the ZBA during four different mayor administrations. At its best, the zoning board of appeals is an exercise in small D democracy, where members of the public can make their voices heard and be listened to carefully and seriously. Those of us who serve on this board realize that our decisions affect the daily lives of the city's residents and a strive to make those decisions produce a growing and thriving Boston while respecting the design, social, and community traditions that make our city special. I want to thank all the current members of the board who treat their positions as a public trust. It has been a pleasure working with all of you, and I want to publicly acknowledge your service as well. And now, take a roll call of the attendees. Mr. Fortune?
Here.
Mr. Robson?
Here.
Ms. Peñado?
Here.
Ms. Dunn?
Here.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Present.
Okay, Mr. Fortune? Uh, we'll begin, I'll begin the call of the list.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well said, Mr. Chair. Christine will be dismissed by the city, and we'll, good luck to the new board members and the existing board members that will continue on. The first order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes of August 9, 2022, and August 23 of 2022. We need a motion.
A moved. Second.
All those in favor? No, doing the roll, sorry, doing the roll, poll vote. Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
The motion, the motion carries.
Calling the first extension, calling BOA 1005496, 1070 to 1078 Blumberg Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, Attorney Matt Echols with the business address of 11 Beacon Street on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Echols. Regarding 1070 to 1078 Blumberg Avenue, the board originally granted this relief on October 9, 2020. Therefore, COVID tolling does not apply. This relief expires on October 9 of 2022, and this is the first request for extension. I recommend that the board grant this relief if it determines that it's appropriate under the circumstances.
Can I have a motion?
Motion to extend until October of 2023.
October 9 of 2023?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
All right, roll call, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 754-388, 63 to 69 Brimmer Street. There's a companion case, BOA 754-380, 55 to 57 Brimmer Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Matt. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney John Pulgeni on behalf of the applicant at Park Street School, business address 10 Fourth Road in Brentree. We are looking for a one-year extension.
Thank you, Mr. Pulgeni. Regarding 6396 and 5557 Brimmer Street, the board originally granted this relief on October 11, 2019, and the applicant got its first extension of that relief until October 11 of 2022. However, that extension was not necessary. With tolling, this relief does not expire until January 16 of 2023. I recommend that the board confirm this date for the record. The applicant now also requests an additional extension until October 11 of 2023. I recommend that the board grant this extension if it determines that it's appropriate under the circumstances.
Motion, please.
Motion, go ahead.
Motion to approve extension to October 11, 2023.
There are second. Okay, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everybody, and good luck. Calling the next case, calling BOA 829-747-198-HANOVERSTREET. Name and address for the record, please. Is Rebecca Lee on?
Yes.
Name and address for the record, please.
Rebecca Lee, One Financial Center, Ms. Levin.
Thank you. Regarding 198 Hanover Street, the board originally granted this relief on January 18 of 2019. So with tolling, this relief expired on April 25 of 2022. The board also approved as a board final auditor matter an increase in the scope of this project on July 7 of 2020. COVID tolling does not apply to that because it was granted after the start of COVID-19, state of emergency. Using this date, the relief expired on July 7, 2022. Under either date, this relief is currently expired. I recommend that the board grant this relief only if the applicant can satisfy the board, then an extension is necessary under the circumstances.
Motion, please.
Motion to.
You want to find out?
Yeah, can we get an update on this?
Sure. This is, this is a project to replace dilapidated buildings along the freeway between Hanover and Cross Streets. It's been the subject of litigation. Then there was also community opposition to a proposed Starbucks. There's a signed lease with Citizens Bank that very much wants to relocate a bigger and better branch at this location. There's construction financing in place, there's a building permit in place. The applicant has worked out arrangements with DOT since it's proximate to the tunnel. So there's been a lot of permitting work that has happened, but the, the failure of the visitor market and the downtown market to return in a robust way has made it difficult to find a second tenant. So the, the, the client is very much in the market for a second retail tenant for the rest of the space and hopes very much to begin construction next year, but they're asking for an extension.
So what is the extension being asked for?
A one-year extension.
From?
Well, it expired in July.
Right, okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we do a one-year extension from today's date. So we'll do September 27.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Sorry, yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Motion passes, you have a one-year extension from today's date.
Thank you.
Calling the next extension, calling BOA 825-727, 1078 to 1082 Dorchester Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Vernon Woodworth, architect, 9 Elizabeth Street in Mattapan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Regarding 1078 to 1082 Dorchester Ave, the board originally granted this relief on June 14, 2019. With tolling, this relief expired on September 18 of 2022. The applicant is now requesting a one-year extension until September 18 of 2023. I recommend that the board grant this extension if it finds it appropriate under the circumstances.
Motion?
Motion to extend until September 18, 2023. Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Recusal.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, a board final auditor, calling BOA 118-2380, 5 Glenburn Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Acting Secretary, members of the board, General Sephister from the law firm of Dane Torby, 175 Federal Street, Boston. If I could just take a moment, Mr. Acting Chair, I want to be able to say fine, I want to send congratulations to Christine Aragio, who I had the pleasure of serving with when I served on the board, and I also want to say that wish all those of you who are departing as members of the board soon, I want to thank you for your service. This matter comes before you, again, this was heard on November 16, and the board granted the relief for this three-family property to be built. At that time, the board approved it with one parking space, and we noted at that time that there was a desire to retain the trees, certain trees. When we went through design review, and I'll have Matt Mueller give you the specifics on that, the BPDA wanted to be, wanted to ensure the retention of the trees, but would result in the need to remove a, the, remove a tree in order for us to have a parking space, because the board granted with one, with one parking space. And the request here is that to get clarification from the board that we'd be able to move that tree such that that parking space will not be in the front yard. But I want Matt Mueller to give you, he's the architect, if, Matt, if you could now give them the specifics on your conversation with BPDA.
Sure, good morning. My name is Matt Mueller from Hugh Architecture at 181 Doden Street in Dorchester. So it's, it's pretty simple, essentially what Joseph said. We were approved for one parking space, and there's a tree in that spot. During the review process, a neighbor requested we try to maintain the trees on the right side of the lot, and I know the city is going through a phase where they're trying to maintain trees in the urban areas as well. So basically, we just need to take out one tree, we can still keep two trees on that side, which I think would satisfy that request of the neighbor, and it would allow us to have some off-street parking, which was also a request of the neighborhood. So, in our minds, it's a good compromise to allow us to remove this one tree to have one parking space.
Is there any possibility of transplanting that tree?
I don't know about transplanting. I mean, we would definitely be able to plant a new tree or multiple new trees. I think that would be a more likely scenario. But I'm not a tree expert, I don't know what it would take to transplant it.
All right, well, I mean, the reason I'm raising this is because, yes, it is recently announced city policy to try to maximize the number of trees to help with the issues of climate change. So removing a tree for a parking space doesn't seem unreasonable, but it also seems like there might be a better solution that could satisfy both needs.
Well, Mr. Erlich, if I might say, I too am not a tree expert, but I think that we're very sensitive to that, that's the reason why we want to come back before the board. And I think what, what Mr. Mueller just indicated, certainly we would look at trying to plant. So we at least will be trying to increase the tree canopy going forward, but I think that here, I think this compromise here to take out one of the three trees might be, I would suggest to the board, would be an appropriate compromise for this, and we will certainly look at trying to plant something as a substitute.
Okay, well, then, can I have a motion that would include addressing the possibility of new trees?
I'll make a motion to approve with the proviso to plant two new trees to replace this one existing tree, which is a little bit larger and probably cannot be relocated.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
And the chair is also in favor, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Calling the next board final auditor, calling BOA 127-6325, 47 Chesbor Road. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Mark McGlaughlin, are you on?
Yep. Name and address for the. I'm Mark McGlaughlin, the address is 47 Chesbor Road. The project, this is the second time we're going through this open process. The initial process was already granted. There was a minor design change, it were two shed dormers, now there's a full A-frame roof going on, so we decided to go through the process again. The family, there's a Boston firefighter, the husband is the, one of the children living in the home has a rare disease called Duchenne disease, they're going to need to make the first floor ADA compliant within the next few years, therefore, that's why they're going through with this project. We've been through the BPDA, we have approval, we've been through the neighborhood committee twice, and we're just coming back through final auditor again to hopefully move forth on the project.
Is there, is there any change in the overall structure height?
Yes, there was original shed dormer, now it's a full A-frame, we are not excluding the 35 feet.
Okay, Mr. Robinson, do you have a chance to review the drawings?
I have. I think it's, I appreciate the sort of perspective and what they're asking, I mean, they did have two full-size dormers, I believe I remember this case, and I think the, the new height is at 29 feet, nine inches, so it's just a little bit higher than the other one, but I think it's actually a little bit more consistent with changing the entire roof structure versus the long shed dormer. So I have no questions for the promoter, and think this is a fair ask in terms of the adjustment.
Okay, any, any questions on the board? Okay, that's a board final auditor, not necessarily going to ask for public testimony, can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve, and my understanding is you've already worked with the BPDA on the approval of this in terms of the design?
Yes, I have approval, an approval letter from Scott Slarsky.
From Scott Slarsky, okay, yep, thank you, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
And the chair is in favor, the motion passes.
Thank you. Calling the next board final auditor, calling BZC 32903, 188 High Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Maranci, I'm an attorney with the business at address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Mr. Chairman, members, this is an application for a new hotel at 188 High Street in downtown Boston. This was originally approved in 2013. There was litigation that has been concluded, it has been validly extended a number of times, most recently until May 6, 2023. The purpose of this board final auditor hearing is to allow the board to review and associate with the application a revised plan set. The revised plan set resulted in no changes to the zoning relief that has already been granted. Under the revised plan, the proposed building height has been reduced from 14 stories and 131 feet to seven stories and 69 feet. Essentially, the building is being cut in half. The proposed FAR has been reduced from 16 to 9.13. The number of hotel rooms proposed has been reduced from 50 to 24. The building footprint would remain identical, it is essentially just removing about half of the vertical height of the building.
So, Mr. Maranci, it sounds like all of the changes are reductions, and there's no additional violation?
That is correct, and this was confirmed by Mr. Joseph at the inspectional services department as being appropriate for board final auditor action.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Robinson, did you get a chance to look at those drawings?
I did. Was this originally an Article 80 small project?
Yes, it was, Mr. Robinson, it is, no, no, I'm sorry, it was not, it was not Article 80, owing to the small size of the footprint, it actually did not rise to the level of 20,000 square feet.
Okay, so have you gone through, you haven't done BPDA design review yet, correct?
Actually, we did, there was a question in the beginning as to whether or not it was Article 80, because I was not associated with the project when it was originally approved. So we in effect did do a full design review session with BPDA Urban Design and Planning Staff, and then it was discovered that Article 80 was not applicable, certainly now with the building being nine stories and, you know, under 10,000 square feet.
Okay.
But do I, so BPDA, it would not be harmful to attach BPDA design review, I think, understanding your question, I believe, yeah, I believe that we're basically finished, but it's probably appropriate under the circumstances. Thank you.
Mr. Maranci, are there any design changes, or is it simply just a smaller version of the same design?
There's a different architect, so the building does look a bit differently. As I said, it's been initially reviewed by BPDA, but it's probably makes sense.
I think we should put a proviso on it.
Yes, okay, all right, can I have a motion?
No further questions. I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
And the chair is also in favor, the motion passes.
Calling the next case, Brown Water.
Great, thank you.
Case BOA 136, 3912, 705 to 711, Boylston Street. This is submitting a load test waiver for micro piles for structural work, the violation is Article 32, Section 4, G-Cott, out of the building. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dennis Quilty, attorney representing the applicant, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Thank you very much. This address, Boylston Street, was subject of the previous ZBA matter for actually takeout because it included a coffee, this is a Capital One, proposed Capital One bank with a Pete's Coffee sub-use, if you will. Subsequently, the discovery was made that resulted in the need for groundwater relief. We've gone through the process, the groundwater process, we have our no harm, we have been in close contact with the Groundwater Trust, and I think as we arrived here this morning, we are in compliance with this. I have the representatives of Capital One and the project architect on, on with us as well, if there are any questions.
Okay, is Mr. Simil?
Mr. Erlich, Mr. Simil is out of the country, we do have the no harm letter, he has sent it into us, and we also have it, they have everything they need. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
The chair is also in support, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Before, before Mr. Fortune calls the hearings, I just want to remind all the applicants that this is a six-member board, we are a full board at seven, which means if you choose not to go forward, you can ask for administrative deferral.
Thank you. I'm going to call the hearings for 9:30. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals? Give me the address first, please.
231 Everett Street.
I'm sorry, say it again, Counselor.
231 Everett Street, Ward 1.
For the record, calling BOA 129-0231, 231 Everett Street. Name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. We are today seeking an administrative deferral for a full board.
Okay, in that case, we'll just go straight to a motion.
Motion to defer?
I'll second.
Eric.
Mr. Robinson, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
I'm also in favor, and the motion passes.
We'll have a date of November 1.
Oh, I'm always here, you know that. Dark voice from the background. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Better Varazo?
Yes.
And the chair is also in favor, the motion passes.
Calling the next piece, groundwater. Case DOA 136, 3912, 705 to 711, Boylston Street. This is submitting a load test waiver for micro piles for structural work. The violation is Article 32, Section 4, G Card out of the building. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dennis Quilty, attorney representing the applicant, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Thank you very much. This address, Boylston Street, was subject of the previous ZDA matter for actually takeout because it included a coffee, this is a Capital One, proposed Capital One Bank with a Pete's Coffee sub-use, if you will. Subsequently, the discovery was made that resulted in the need for groundwater relief. We've gone through the process, the groundwater process. We have our no harm, we have been in close contact with the groundwater trust, and I think as we arrived here this morning, we are in compliance with this. I have the representatives of Capital One and the project architect on with us as well if there are any questions.
Okay, is Mr. Similay here?
Mr. Similay is out of the country. We do have the no harm letter, he has sent it into us, and we also have it, they have everything they need. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Better Varazo?
Yes.
The chair is also in support, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Before Mr. Fortune calls the hearings, I just want to remind all the applicants that this is a six-member board. We are a full board at seven, which means if you choose not to go forward, you can ask for administrative deferral.
Thank you. I'm going to call the hearings for 9:30. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals? Give me the address first, please.
231 Everett Street.
I'm sorry, say it again, counselor?
231 Everett Street, Ward 1.
For the record, calling DOA 1290231, 231 Everett Street. Name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano, the business address of 11 Beacon Street. We are today seeking an administrative deferral for a full board.
Okay, in that case, we'll just go straight to a motion.
Motion to defer?
Second.
Eric.
Mr. Robinson, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Better Varazo?
Yes.
I'm also in favor, and the motion passes.
We'll have a date of November 1st, 11:30.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the 9:30 cases only? Give me the address.
Yes, 49 Dudley Street, 23 Kenneworth Street, 27 to 29 Kenneworth Street.
Thank you. Calling case DOA 1296092, 23 Kenneworth Street. There are two companion case, DOA 1296093, 27 to 29 Kenneworth Street, and DOA 1296094, 49 Dudley Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and the members of the board. My name is Min Kukkan. I'm the development manager, business address, 103 Terrace Street, Rossbury. I'm here to represent these projects and three addresses. We are continuing to work with BPDA, therefore would like to request an administrative deferral.
Administrative deferral, okay, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer? Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Better Varazo?
Yes.
And the chair is also in favor, the motion passes.
We can probably put you in November 15th if that gives you enough time?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, we'll do November 15th at 11:30.
Mr. Fortune, can we push that to December? They have to go through Article 80.
Okay, Mr. Hampton, would you suggest the 6th to the 13th?
I go, I'd say the 13th, just to be safe.
Okay, so the new date would be December 13th at 11:30.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the 9:30 cases? If you can give me the address, please. Hearing none. Mr. Chair, we do have a withdrawal, I'm going to call it for the record. Case DOA 1310309, 561 to 579 Census Street. They have a letter from counsel, they are withdrawing their project, so I'm going to make a motion for denial of all prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Better Varazo?
Yes.
And the chair is also in favor, the motion passes.
Okay, we're going to call the first case for 9:30, calling DOA 1339031, 101 Kilonix Street. This is the use of premises and open-air commercial parking lot for a free capacity of 15 vehicles under the BTD license. The violation is Article 7, Section 4, a change in the previous decision of zoning board appeal. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Timothy Burke, I'm the architect for the project. My address is 142 Berkeley Street in Boston, and I believe the attorney for the owner, David Gottlieb, is also on the call.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My address is 309 Washington Street in Brighton, and I'm here to represent the applicant. In this appeal, seeks permission to allow us to operate the open-air commercial parking lot for an extension of three years, and as you can see from the plan here, the parking lot is located on Kilonix Street. It includes an iron fence, as well as screening and buffering with a planting bed, and the architect, Timothy Burke, can speak more about that. The park, the landscaping improvements have been actually recently installed within the last three years, and included approving the fencing, as well as installing new curving for the planting bed.
What is, what is the current term, what's the expiration date of the current term, and how long was it?
It was, it was three years, sir, per the previous CBA decision from 2019.
In 2019, okay, and were, did we attach a proviso for screening and buffering at that time?
No, I'm actually looking, looking at the decision right now, and it says relief to expire in three years, so there was no BPDA proviso. I can let you know that I've also sent, I sent a letter to Mr. Jeffrey Hampton at BPDA, showing him the screening and buffering with the fencing. I did not hear back, so.
All right, so, so the screening and buffering that was done was done unilaterally, as opposed to, maybe it was a proviso that we, that we put?
It was, yes.
Okay, all right, Mr. Burke, do you have anything else to tell us about the, about the landscaping?
No, the property is well-maintained.
Okay, Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Plans are good, I think it is consistent, and, you know, there is clear signage, I know we've talked about that a little bit before, and the posting of the rates, so I don't have any other questions for the proponent.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak on either behalf or in opposition to the application?
Hello, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Maggie Ganskoy, I'm with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of the Mayor's Office, we'd like to defer to the board's judgment at this time. We held in a butters meeting, there were no concerns raised at that meeting, and our office is not aware of any concerns from the community at this time.
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands.
Can I have a motion then?
Motion to approve?
For, by length of, for three years?
For three years.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes. From today's date?
I think from the, from the expiration.
Is that the 3, December 31st, 2025, or am I, because that's what's on the list, or we, or we lead it?
I think that might be the, Mr. Robinson, I think that might be the BTD's expiration date on the license.
I got you, okay.
So, we synced it up.
That's what I'm wondering, okay. So, this will sync it up?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes. Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Better Varazo?
Yes.
And the chair also is in favor, the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 1332546, 60 Oak Ridge Street. This is a rectory three-family dwelling with three parking spaces in the rear. Violation is Article 65, Section 60-8, three-family detached dwellings with, Article 65, Section 9, a lot area is insufficient, Article 65, Section 9, lot width insufficient, Article 65, Section 9, lot frontage, Article 65, Section 9, the floor area ratio is excessive, Article 65, Section 9, the building is excessive in stories, and Article 65, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Derek Joyner, Joyner Development, 119B Rhythm Street, Dorchester, Mass. We're proposing to erect a three-family home with off-street parking, three off-street parking spaces in a 1F sub-district. There are 6-2 family homes on the street, and 1-3 family home on the street, so we, and myself and the occupancy team designed the home carefully to, to match the homes that are already in the neighborhood. But as a result, there are some violations that we're seeking relief for, and the following, the lot area requirement is 6,000 square feet. We currently have 5,500. The lot width requirement is 6, 60, we have 50. The lot frontage requirement is 60, we have 50, and the far requirement is .5, we're at .89. And the building story height maximum is 2.5, we're at 3, and the rear yard requirement is 40, and we're at 32.25. Just to give you a quick layout.
Okay, let me ask you a couple of questions. Go ahead, go ahead.
Just to give you a quick layout of the bedroom counts, in unit one, there are three bedrooms, the square footage is 1515, and there's a family room in the basement. In unit two, there are three bedrooms, 1,515 square feet as well, and the third floor is unit three, that's a three-bedroom unit as well, roughly about the same amount of square footage, and there's a separate driveway that will provide off-street parking for three vehicles, and there's no roof deck.
Okay, so a few questions. The height, one of the violations is height, is that just the stories, or is that also the building height?
The building height requirement is 35, we're at 32, so the height requirement is just the story count.
Okay, and the, I'm looking at the elevation now of the basement, you've got a family room that's connected to the first, the first floor unit?
Correct.
And, and what's the, what's the height of the ceiling, and what's the floor-to-grade height?
The floor-to-grade height is, the entire height is eight feet in the basement, nine feet in unit one, two, and three.
Okay, so it looks like from this drawing, it's completely underground?
In the rear it is, because it is a sloping, front-sloping yard, it slopes down to the rear.
Okay, all right, and that, okay, are these units for sale or rental?
Underminium, will provide homeownership opportunity.
Okay. All right, and, and the, so the rest of the basement that's not the family room, is that for utilities for the whole?
Yes.
Each of the units, or are they in the basement?
Yeah, each of the units have their own storage facility, so there's a common area for the mechanical room, and then there's a storage area for unit one, and a storage area for unit two, as well as unit three.
Okay, so there, so there's one access for the upper units to the basement, and then is there an internal access from unit one? The stairwell?
Internal access, yes.
Okay, all right, how are the drawings, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, no, no real questions actually about the proposal itself. I do have one curious question I just wanted to ask on page four, I believe it is, where it's showing the rendering of the street? That one right there?
Yes.
So, 56 is shown as a new building, but is that already done, or is that your future plan? Is that an existing building, correct?
No, that was, that was the plan from last year, but there was a lot of opposition in the existing home at 56, so we preserved it to work with the community, so we scaled back, proposing from six units, now we're down to just three units, just to make peace with the neighborhoods and preserve the existing home, which we rehab, and my daughter's living there, just like I had stated last year, so this is, we reduced it from six units to three units.
Understand, just wanted to clarify in my brain what that was, so no other questions on the proposal, thank you.
So, 60 is essentially a copycat of 56, more or less?
56 is an existing building, it doesn't look anything like that, so that's what I was asking, so. It's an old rendering showing the previous proposal, right, that's what, I just want to confirm in my brain, so.
I think that actually may have a new rendering, Madam Ambassador, I don't know if you.
It's fine, I just wanted to verify that the scale fits with the context of the neighborhood. It seems like the parking has plenty of screening and buffering in the rear, so I really don't have any questions at this point for the, thanks.
All right, any questions on the board? Any comments in favor or opposition to the proposal?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Eric James with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, don't mind my camera, it's being a little bit weird right now. The applicant for 60 Oak Ridge had in a butters meeting on August 4th, and they met with the Lower Mill Service Association on September 20th, which voted to oppose the project, citing community opposition, too many variances, and it would not fit within the neighborhood. We received 14 letters of support and 13 letters of opposition for this project, and at this time, we are asking to defer the judgment to the board on this matter, thank you.
Did you say 14 letters of support and 13 letters of opposition?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, we have those letters at the Mayor's Office, welcome.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fortune. Anyone else to speak on the project?
Mr. Chair, we have a few raised hands here, just want to make sure there's no more left of officials. If not, I'll start with, Batina. Batina, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Batina Ali Salom, 34 Burma Street, Manapin. Thank you, members of the board. My name is Batina Ali Salom. The reason that I'm speaking today is in order to speak on behalf of the members, the residents who are in opposition to the project. I'm told that the present drawings, which are exactly the same that came before the GMNC last year, there are no changes to it. What Mr. Joyner did not disclose today is that the opposition for that particular parcel at number 60, there was great opposition in the removal of old growth trees, both on the side of the yard, as well as in the back of the yard, which directly abuts the residents behind the property. And the property, yes.
So, the, so the opposition was primarily based on the removal of the, of the trees?
There were, there were two, there was the removal of the trees, as well as they thought that the property itself would be out of concurrence with the existing homes of the neighborhood, the existing homes in the neighborhood aged about over 125 years.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Nadine, can you state your name and address?
Nadine, are you there?
Oh, hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm Nadine Marcellus, I live on 27 Ellison Ave. I have lived over in this neighborhood over 45 years, and so I'm calling, I am in full support of the project on Oak Ridge Street. I think it aligns with what's happening in our neighborhood, and also it brings new life into the neighborhood, and I, the people who oppose this wants to keep everything looking like the 1950s, I'm someone who's, who thinks in 2022, we should look at the new development, it will increase the value of the homes in the neighborhood, and, and I think the proposed residence that we just saw on the screen, it fits right into the neighborhood, so I'm not sure why, why the nitpicking over.
Okay, okay, I don't want to question the motivations of either proponent or opponent. Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, what sort of, Mark?
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members of the board. My name is Mark Brunkie, I live at 48 Oak Ridge Street. I would like to point out that this is the same proposal that was brought before the board last year, and was roundly opposed by the Civic Association and the neighbors on 48 Oak Ridge Street, and most importantly, I'd like to say that the only other three-family on, in the neighborhood is, is my three-family, and it's a bit misleading to say that my project and this project are in alignment. My project is, consists of three one-bedroom apartments, the, I have a total occupancy of three, a total number of vehicles added to the street of two. My square footage comes out to 2,910.
Okay, okay, we get it, yeah, all right, so I'm a little confused, because I thought that there was, you said that there was a significant opposition, but I thought we were at 14 and 13. So, which is it?
May I speak to that?
No, I, well, I was going to ask from, from Mr. Mark Brunkie, the. All right, well, we'll, we'll move on, yeah, the proponent can speak to it when we're done taking testimony, anybody else? Okay, so I would ask two things to the proponent, one is to respond to the issue of the opposition, and secondly, this is increasingly an issue in the city about trees, is there a way to accomplish your goals without, without removal of mature trees? So, please answer those two questions.
Absolutely, the, the trees are aged, they're over 100 years old, and they're somewhat unhealthy, so in removing.
Oh, fuck you then, I don't have to.
Whoa, 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 please mute anyone else, the applicant is speaking. Go ahead.
We're proposing to, sorry, I was just going back to that. We're proposing, yeah, to increase tree canopy, so we're going to do, plant four new trees, two in the back and two in the front, to the right. I don't know if we can show the, the drawing of, of, well, we're going to plant four new trees, two in the back and two in the front.
Are those... Does that show on the drawings, Mr. Robinson?
There is a scant site plan. Doesn't specifically call out the trees, but I certainly think that's something we could put into a proviso if we'd like. But there is some shown in the renderings, but...
Yeah, there is.
And for the applicant, Mr. Joyner, I'm a little confused about the testimony about the community response. Can you just...
Yeah, so there was a three-family. I didn't want to go there, but there's a three-family. It was originally a two-family owned by Mark Brunkie.
Okay, you know what? Actually, thanks. I don't really want to get into motivations and pitting members against each other. We want a straightforward testimony about the merits or demerits of the project.
Yeah, well, it was...
All right, if there's no raised hands, can I... No, no, no. Hold on. Hold on. Hold on. Can I have a motion, please?
I will make a motion to approve...
There are raised hands. Opposition has not spoken completely. Myself...
Oh, okay. Madam Ambassador, are there more raised hands?
Um, yes, there are two additional raised hands that just popped up.
Okay, no, that's what I asked. Okay, then before we make a motion, let's take that testimony.
Hi, my name is Brian Sullivan. I live at 49 Ellison. We've been here 40 years, community members. This is a neighborhood of, you know, longtime residents, families. When new people move in, you know, it takes time to get to know them, but we get to know them. It is not a neighborhood of condominiums where people come and go, you know, don't even see them in the yard. Basically, this property is turning the whole thing into a parking lot that is going to drain into the neighbor's yard. So there's lots of climate issues. Opposition at Lower Mill Civic Association was unanimous. The reason opposition as opposed to support might seem skewed because there might be some ringers on the other side.
Okay, again, I don't want to question the motivation, please.
Fair enough. It's been a long process. It's been a long stressful process for all of us who have had to come to 10-plus meetings to let them know, let people know that we are opposed to this kind of construction. There were two proposals last year, one at 56 and one at 60. The proposal for you today is exactly the one that was rejected last year.
Right, so, okay, we're just talking about 60. We know that 56 did not happen. So I'm only interested in hearing testimony about 60, and your issue is out of character with the neighborhood and density and drainage. Am I correct?
And it's a three-family on a single-family lot being squeezed in with seven barriers.
Thank you. Thank you. And there's another raised hand?
Yeah, we'll go to Lila.
Hi, this is Lila Silverstein. I live at 47 Oak Ridge Street. I oppose this project. It's too population-dense for this area, which is primarily one-family and two-family homes. It proposes to chop down two very mature oak trees that protect against soil erosion and flooding. And we don't want a paved-over backyard. We don't want anything larger than a one-family home constructed on this undersized lot. We're also concerned about traffic going up the street. This is a one-way street down Galivan Boulevard. There would be numerous construction vehicles there, service vehicles. We're very concerned.
Okay, we'll go to Karen. Hello?
Thank you. We got density and traffic, and again, the issue of trees and drainage. So I think we're pretty clear on what the dispute is over the merits of the project. I would entertain a motion at this point.
I'll make a motion to approve with provisos related to... I believe there is a single tree in the middle of the site that cannot be saved if this is approved. It does look like there's trees at the rear of the site that might be able to be saved if the site plan review is done by the BPA in accordance to try to protect the trees. And I think the proponent could replace, in addition to any missing trees, a robust landscape plan. And also, look at porous paving materials for the driveway in the rear to mitigate any drainage issues. I think the three-family with the condominium homeownership is of three-bedroom units, I think is a good add in terms of the proposal.
Second.
All right, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Pinado?
Yes.
Ms. Dohm?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
I oppose.
And the chair is in favor, so the motion passes.
Thank you.
Calling next two cases. Calling BOA 1340974, 28 Clifton Street. There is a companion case, BOA 134098030, Clifton Street. This is the 28 Clifton. One of two families' building unconstructed adjacent to one another. The violation, Article 50, Section 1, floor area ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, used open spaces insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, large areas insufficient. Article 50, Section 44, the dimensional requirement. Article 50, Section 29, front yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, side yard is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 29, the rear yard is insufficient. This is for Clifton. It has the same purpose, and there is different violations. So I'm going to read that to the record. Violation, Article 50, Section 1, floor area ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 44, dimensional requirement. Article 50, Section 29, front yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, side yard is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 29, rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Chair Erlich, I'd like to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you.
Vernon Woodworth Architects.
Okay, then just let me remind you that that means we're now a five-member board, which means you have to have unanimous approval. So I just want to give you the option of an administrative deferral should you choose to take it.
My understanding is the applicants would like to proceed.
Okay.
Vernon Woodworth, 9 Elizabeth Street in Mattapan. This project involves the demolition of an existing single-family that was the family home of the two owners. The proposal is that two brothers build side-by-side attached three families, and each will be owner-occupied. This will add residential dwelling units to the neighborhood and allow these individuals to continue living in the community that they grew up in.
So I'm sorry, I missed it. These are both three-family proposed. What are the existing?
It's a single-family.
Both single-family?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Can you walk us through the violations?
Well, this... The setbacks are based on requirements for a smaller zone, less dense development. And so the floor area ratio, in addition, is also exceeded. There's plenty of parking, so that was not...
What is the zoning of these lots?
These are both in a two-family zone.
Okay.
And... And used open space is limited by the meeting the parking requirements, but the area does have open space and adjacent areas for recreation. So feeling is that the opportunities for open air and exercise are available and that the building will add value to the community and provide additional housing for rental.
What are the unit sizes, please?
Unit sizes are approximately 1,700 square feet.
All of them, are they identical, pretty much?
Yeah, the buildings are flips, and the floors are identical.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
I think the drawings are fine in terms of the proposal. You know, I do think this proposal is much more dense and much larger on the site than the previous discussion we had in terms of the open space. And, you know, there is a large tree here, but I think the, um... You know, I just have some questions about, I think it's just the density of it is just too much for this particular site, in my opinion. And I also will reference the BPA's recommendation as well on this. So no further questions from me on the actual proposal besides those comments.
Okay, well, let me segue. Mr. Hampton, what is the BPA's comments on this proposal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We recommend it denial without prejudice. This is taking down a one-family and essentially putting up a six-family. It's just too dense for that neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the board? Is anyone here to speak either for or against the proposal?
Good morning, Chair. I can't even say Madam Chair. Members of the board, Denise DeSantis from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicants did meet with Direct the Brothers back in July as well as DSNI, W Street Neighborhood Initiative. They do have Direct the Brothers support. Folks did want to see the brothers and families stay within this neighborhood. At this time, our office would like to defer any judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Wood State Representative Liz Miranda's office of the Suffolk District. And our office would like to go on record as in support of this project.
Okay, thank you.
I'll open the floor to Sandy Fernandez. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Sandy Fernandez. I can't hear you. Can you hear me now?
There's a little echo over here.
Hear me now? Yes. My name is Sandy Fernandez. I live on 47 Thoreau Street. I'm speaking on behalf of my mother, Maria Fernandez, and my father, Antonio Fernandez. In the beginning, we were in support of the brothers building the development, but after seeing the violations and how it may affect the property that my parents own on 2 Marshall Street, it's just a concern on the size being too big for the actual property size. So we're opposing it.
Thank you. And Manny, can you state your name and address for the record, please? I'm unmuted.
Hello?
Hi.
Could you hear me? Yeah, my name is Manny Fernandez. I live on 44 Thoreau Street, and I echo my sister's concern with the space violations that around the property that are going to affect our parents' property on 2 Marshall Street.
All right, I think your sister made an articulate presentation. Thank you.
I have no additional remarks.
Okay, can I have a... All right, so we have the situation that the BPA is potentially too dense. Anyway, can I have a motion, please?
I will make a motion. I appreciate the story and the brothers, and I just think the proposal is too dense, and I'll make a motion to deny without prejudice.
I'll second that.
Fortune? Yeah.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Pinado?
Yes.
Ms. Dohm?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
I think she's refused.
She refused. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. And the chair also supports a motion for the denial without prejudice.
Mr. Chair, it's now 10:34. I'm going to call the 10:30. Would you like to make your announcement about the board?
Nothing would make me happier, Mr. Fortune. Just a reminder to everybody, to all the applicants, we are a six-member board today. Full board is seven members, which means you are entitled, if you wish, take an administrative deferral without any explanation and reschedule for a time when the board is full.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With that, I'm going to call any deferrals and withdrawals for the 10:30 cases. This is the 10:30 only, so if you're going to withdraw or defer, if you could give me the address first, please.
42 Dorset Street?
Mr. Counselor, for the record, calling BOA 1351772, 42 to 44 Dorset Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adam Zuma-Rancy, with the business address of 168 8 Streets on Boston, first floor. So we are requesting a deferral in this matter. The plans were revised from the original set of drawings, eliminating some basement livable space. But unfortunately and inadvertently, there were some dormers that were removed from some pages of the plans, and some were still existing, so there's some inconsistencies with the actual drawings in front of the ZBA, so...
Okay, Mr. Spitz, we appreciate the explanation, but actually, you're entitled to just request an administrative deferral without explanation. So I assume that's what you're doing?
Well, just a... Yes, and no, just basically, I was hoping to get a sooner date than just a typical deferral date. As the revised plans have been submitted, we've been in conversations with the plans examiner.
Okay, okay, okay. The request has been made. First, let's go for the motion, and then we can figure out a date. Can I have a motion?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Pinado?
Yes.
Ms. Dohm?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
The chair is also in favor. Motion passes. And Mr. Fortune requests for an early date.
Yeah, the earliest date we can get you is November 1st, and that'll be at 11:30.
Great, thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the 10:30 cases? If you could give me the address first, please. Bearing none, go back to the 9:30 cases. Calling case BOA 134669310, Hurwin Street. This is an existing second-floor front porch enclosed, you create a three-season porch. The violation, Article 60, Section 9, the floor area ratio is excessive. Article 60, Section 9, side yard is insufficient. And Article 60, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Donald Donaldson from Bean Town Builders, contractor for 2000 Corrigan Street.
Okay, can you explain what it is that you're looking to do? First of all, is this a homeowner-occupied building or...
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, sir. So Mr. Battle is the second-floor occupant of the property, retired MBTA and employee. Mr. Battle wants to... First, he hired us to refurbish the existing front porches, both first floor and second floor, but upon the project taking place, we realized that the property, that the porches needed more work than originally anticipated. And so as part of that process, Mr. Battle wanted to enclose his top, his second-floor porch so that he could have an all-season porch, which is consistent with the neighborhood.
Okay, we got it. And so the violations, like the front yard and side yard insufficiencies, those are existing conditions, I assume, correct?
Existing conditions, yes.
Okay, I mean, this is a pretty straight... I'm a little surprised this didn't go before the subcommittee, but Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
No, very straightforward. I think it is consistent. There are other enclosed porches on the street. I have real no questions for the proponent.
Okay, any questions on the board? Is there anyone to speak on behalf or in opposition to the project?
Sorry, I was muted. I didn't realize. This is Denise DeSantis from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant did have a brothers' meeting back in July, and they also met with the Greater Chamberlain and Chaplain Circle Association, and they do have Direct the Brothers support. At this time, we would like to defer any judgment to the board. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands.
Can I have a motion, please? Pardon me? I didn't hear you.
I made a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, I don't take... Mr. Hampton, this doesn't need a design review, does it?
No, it doesn't.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Pinado?
Yes.
Ms. Dohm?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
And the chair is also in favor. Motion passes.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 1352932, 221 West Springfield Street. This is a roof deck, interior floor repair, day repair, and lights. The violation, Article 64, Section 34, roof structure restriction, roof deck with a hatch. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jerry DiPiero, DiPiero Construction, located at 875 Mass Ave.
My name is Jerry DiPiero, DiPiero Construction, located at 875 Mass Ave. I'd like to thank the board members for taking the time to deal with this case. Thank you.
Okay, can you explain what's being proposed?
Yeah, homeowners on the top floor are looking to add a set of stairs that are not there now, going up to the roof, and a approximately 15 by 15 roof deck. Some hardwood flooring on the top floor, probably like 200 square feet, and some lighting.
And it's accessed by hatch?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And has this gone through the south end?
Yes.
And it's been approved?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a, all right, okay, that's a good, that's a good picture. All right, Mr. Robinson again seems relatively straightforward. How are the drawings?
Drawings are good, no questions on the proposal.
Okay, any questions in the board? Anyone here to testify on behalf or in opposition?
Hi, yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Kim Cruzelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted a Butters meeting on this project, where it was supported by the Butters, and they also received support from the Claremont Neighborhood Association. At this time, our office would like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Secretary, we have one letter of support.
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands.
No raised hands. Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Robinson, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Pinado?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
And the Chair is also in favor, the motion passes.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 135120559 Hudson Street. This is change in occupancy, include takeout, violation of Article 3, Section 19. Use is conditional, takeout. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning again, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Dennis Quilty, attorney, representing the applicant before you today. With me is the owner, Catherine Chan. Again, this is, as indicated, a request for allowance of takeout. No work to be done in this existing restaurant in the Chinatown neighborhood.
What is the name of the restaurant, Mr. Dennis?
Jumbo Oriental LLC, DBA Jumbo Seafood.
Okay, so is this an existing restaurant wanting to add takeout, or there's new ownership, or what?
Yeah, it's a little bit confusing, Mr. Chair. It's an existing restaurant. The applicant actually owned the business, sold it in the late 19, I'm sorry, in 2006, to another entity who was granted takeout relief. In this year, she and her husband took the business back over again, and somehow were cited for takeout, which had already existed at the site. It's very confusing, but we'd like to clarify that they're entitled to the use.
Okay, so there is a history of takeout at this location?
Yes, sir.
And when the current owners owned it previously, did they have takeout then? In other words, did they have experience with takeout in the city?
Yes, they did. In 1996, they were granted takeout at the site, and then sold the business. The predecessor had takeout, and now they're seeking to reapply for it, if you will.
Retakeout, got it.
Retakeout, exactly.
Okay, just for the sake of form, Mr. Robinson, I'll ask you, how are the plans?
Plans are good, only one question. So, I know this is a challenge. Is this accessible, is that an accessible entrance? Sort of planned north of the stared entrance that seems to come around by the bathrooms? What it looks like on the plans, and I just wonder. I think, trying to see if we have accessibility issues here. But that was my only question for the proponent.
Ms. Chan, are you with us?
As a frequenter of the restaurant, I will say, yes. It is a, it shares the entrance with the residence, and they can access the restaurant from here.
Okay, that's what I figured. I was just making sure. I thought that's what it looked like, but I think it's good, let's just check. No other questions for me?
Thank you, Ms. Dong.
Thank you, Ms. Dong. Very enlightening us. Any questions in the board? Is there anyone here to speak from the general public?
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Chu Lan Hong. Can you guys see me? Sorry. My name is Chu from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, we would like to defer judgment to the board. No concerns were raised from the neighborhood, to my knowledge. They did go in front of the CNC and have a support. We did not hold a Butters meeting for this matter, because they had just gotten approved for the CB license earlier this year.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands.
All right, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, Secretary, we do have some support letters.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
With the usual takeout language?
With the usual takeout language, yes.
And this is proponent?
This applicant only.
Yeah. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second, Chair.
All right, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Pinado?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
And I, too, am in favor, so the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 1307730306, Sumner Street. This is a recent addition, change arc number three to a fourth unit residential dwelling with red deck. Violation of Article 25, Section 5, this is fantastic district. Article 32, Section 32 dash four, this is E5. Article 27T dash five, this is East Boston I4. Article 53, Section 8, forbidden use in a 3F 2000 sub-district. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the additional lot areas is sufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the door height is excessive in feet. Article 53, Section 9, the door height is excessive in feet. Article 53, Section 9, used block space is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the side yards insufficient. And Article 53, Section 9, the red yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Richard Lynn's, 245 Sumner Street, East Post, on behalf of petitioner. Mr. Secretary, my apologies, I probably should have cut you off earlier. My client is just elected to take an administrative deferral. I'm going to report again, my apologies.
Okay, Mr. Lynn. Make a motion for deferral?
Second.
Mr. Ehrlich, you're muted.
Okay, don't know how that happened. Anyway, so thank you, Mr. Fortune. So, is a motion made and seconded? Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
You're muted.
I was with Mark, muted. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Ms. Pinado?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
The Chair also supports it, the motion is fast.
We can do November 1st. I don't know if we'll have a full board, but we can do November for us at 11:30.
That's fine, I have other matters that day, so that works. Thank you.
Okay. Then calling the next case, calling DOA 1376649313313A, Meridian Street. This is a removal of this proviso, the petitioner only, the violation of Article 6, Section 4, the takeout provision we've granted to this petitioner. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Nina Lohan. The address is 313 Meridian Street, and I am here in behalf...
You just muted yourself somehow. I don't know what's going on, but you're muted.
Were you guys able to hear me?
No, no, you're clear.
Okay, so my name is Nina Lohan. The address is 313 Meridian Street, and I am here in behalf of Louisa David.
Okay, can you explain to us what the proposal is?
Yes, so this is my first time, or our first time, going through this process. We are the new owners of the restaurant, and what we're looking to do is basically change over everything to our name.
Okay, so, and that, but then you're mostly talking about the takeout proviso?
Yeah, so one of the steps that we were asked to do was to remove the takeout proviso, which was only for the previous owners. So, we're trying to take that out, so it can be assigned to our name.
Right, so, just so you'll know, since it's your first time, whenever we grant takeout approval, it's always for the petitioner only, so that's standard fare.
Okay.
And if you're now the new owner, then it makes total sense for you to be asking for it to be applied to your ownership status. So, let me ask you a question. What kind of restaurant is it?
It is a Salvadorian and Mexican restaurant. It is mostly takeout. It does have a few seats, but it's mostly takeout.
Okay, and have you run a restaurant before with takeout?
No.
Okay, so the city has a fairly stringent set of guidelines around takeout that you can get from special services or from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services to make sure you're in compliance. So, what we do in situations like this is if we approve it, we grant it to the petitioner only with the usual takeout provisos, which you should look into. So, all right, so now we'll go through the process. Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
Drawings are fine, no, appears no real changes. Are you doing anything to the exterior or signage update, sir, or is that already done?
No, everything's basically being kept as is. Just on the windows, we were able to put some vinyl that just says the name of the restaurant, but nothing changed to the structure. The outside, what did it called, sorry, like the big banner that has an email. We're not changing any things being kept.
Donning, donning wall or missing?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. No other questions from me.
All right, any questions in the board? All right, is anyone here to speak about this project?
Yes. First of all, I apologize for the loud music, my neighbors. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and sorry, I'm in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Since there was no change that would affect the neighborhood as a whole, the applicant was just asked to contact the local neighborhood association, so they would know about the change of ownership and the takeout proviso. No objections were raised, and at this moment, our office will lay to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, all right, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with the standard takeout proviso language as well for this petitioner only.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Pinado?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
And the Chair is also in favor, the motion passes. So, to the applicant, just make sure that you avail yourself of the information about what the various conditions of the takeout language are, so you'll be fully informed.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Calling the last case, 9:30, calling DOA 1376664727 Atlantic Ave. This is a change of occupancy to include a cannabis retail, including reinforcing walls with wire mesh flashing, two vaults on the first and second floor. Building a new wall to expand the second floor vault area. Violation of Article 44, Section 10. First floor cannabis retail use is conditional. Article 44, Section 10. Second floor cannabis retail accessory use is conditional. And Article 44, Section 10, the cannabis establishment use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, is applicant on this?
Is the applicant on?
Oh, Blake, Blake, give me one second. All right, Blake, I'm going to make you a panelist. Once you're a panelist, you can unmute yourself and start speaking.
Hello, good morning.
Hi there, go ahead. Good morning. I guess I'm, I thought that the board was no longer considering cannabis cases, but maybe this was in the process, in the pipeline before those changes were made.
No, Mr. Ehrlich, this is Jeff. For that to happen, an amendment has to be done to the zoning code, and that hasn't happened yet.
Oh, okay, all right. All right, Mr. Man, please describe your project.
Thank you, sir. This is a proposed adult-use cannabis retail and courier establishment, proposed for the first floor of 727 Atlantic Avenue, directly across the street from South Station. The proposed use is in harmony, you know, with the zoning ordinance and the city's Boston Equity Ordinance. We are majority-owned by Boston Equity Program participants, social equity participants, and economic empowerment participants. Our second floor will be reserved for administrative offices, and we'll be doing some trainings and lending the space to nonprofits with restorative social justice. We'll have folks entering on our Beach Street entrance. There will be a security guard on the sidewalk and one in the vestibule. We'll have a man trap in the Beach Street entrance with another ID check station. We'll have up to 13 point-of-sale systems, and the customer flow is exiting on Atlantic Avenue. We're also going to be putting a video board with train and bus schedules, because we anticipate the majority of our customers will be folks who are already there to utilize South Station as a transit hub.
Okay, thank you. So, the, how are you handling storage? I see, was that a vault shown on the first floor?
Correct, so there's an existing office where the vault is shown. We're going to take down one wall and add an additional wall to make that a little bit longer. There will be some reinforcements of the building material between, basically, the drywall and the studs to limit or delay someone who might attempt to break in. Every square inch of this facility, aside from the bathroom, is covered by security cameras pursuant to the Cannabis Control Commission regulations. And yeah, that is the primary renovation on the first floor. Really, the place is pretty pristine. Those point-of-sale counters are a prior jewelry store's display case set. And we're going to have a queuing area that's in the circle on your screen. That will have stanchions and can hold up to, I think, about 35 people. So, we don't anticipate any street queuing. Also, just because of how many retail stores are open in the state, we don't expect the lines, like, you know, happened a few years ago. And I will just note, we are outside of both the school buffer zone of 500 feet, and we're also over a half a mile away from any other cannabis establishment in the city.
Oh, that's interesting, okay. And how are deliveries going to be conducted?
Yep, we will have deliveries to the facility, likely through the Beach Street entrance. There's the stairwell to the plan south of this on the screen. That may be used as deliveries in case deliveries are happening during sort of normal operations hours. But yeah, that will be the primary mode through the Beach Street entrance.
But are you going to do it off-hour? I mean, it's obviously a busy location.
Yeah, there's a lawning zone parking spot directly in front of that entrance, so we intend to use that. We have a contract with Plymouth Armor Group, which is one of the state's largest business-to-business transportation companies in the state. So, we're going to work with them. We also had a City of Boston grant to get a Fussman O'Neill traffic study done, and the traffic study conclusion was that there are going to be no significant adverse impacts. We really do anticipate most of our customers already being, you know, in the vicinity on foot. And actually, as a concession to the neighbors who are worried about additional traffic, we pledged to not have billboard advertisements on the highway. We're not seeking folks to come drive in. And in addition, we added the courier, which will have one vehicle, really just to avoid people from Ink Block and the South End from Ubering over. So, we did a couple of things in response to some of the neighbors' concerns.
Okay, and what are the hours of operation?
We proposed 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, seven days a week.
Seven days a week?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, how are the drawings, Mr. Robinson?
Drawings are fine. I think that, you know, it is a clear circulation path, and I see that it's accessible with some sort of lift, because there are some stairs, it looks like, from up from Beach Street. And the queuing does seem to be taken care of in a certain area. So, and the fact that it's outside of both buffer zones, I really don't have any specific questions for the proponent.
Okay, just before we keep going to the applicant, has this already been before the Cannabis Board?
Yes, sir. It was unanimously approved without conditions at the Boston Cannabis Board's July 27th meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions in the board? All right, anyone here to testify for or against the proposal?
Good afternoon, oh, good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Chu from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, we would like to defer judgment to the board. During our neighborhood meeting, concerns were raised by the community about smokers sitting on stoops. Neighbors are concerned that these smokers may block egress paths. that these smokers may block egress paths from the buildings. The community has also brought up concerns about traffic congestion, given that there is currently a significant amount of vehicular congestion at the corner of Beach and Atlantic Avenue. The community is concerned that additional vehicles barred in out of business can further hamper movement in around the Leather Districts. Again, at this time, we would like to defer judgment to the board.
Mr. Chair, Secretary, we have those letters that the mayor's office just spoke of.
Good morning, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The council will like to go and record in opposition based on feedback from neighbors in the Leather District that this proposal would exacerbate existing quality of life issues that the community is currently facing. One is smoke filtering into living spaces and negatively impacting president's health or air quality on the streets and in alleys. The vehicular congestion and parking prices that would lead to double parking and additional pedestrian safety issues and current issues of loitering in the neighborhood. For these reasons and more, Council President Flynn remains opposed to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan for City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty. Our office has only received letters of opposition. The neighborhood has spoken in this particular case. They don't want the shop or enhance their quality of life. Therefore, the council stands with the neighbors in opposition.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Patrick Lyons on behalf of State Representative Aaron Mikowitz. We'd like to, after hearing from a number of constituents, we'd like to also in opposition of this project. Thank you.
Catherine, I am muted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, good morning. My name is Catherine Friedman. I'm a Leather District resident, 107 South Street. In meetings with the applicants, the neighborhood has expressed overwhelming opposition to this dispensary. So I ask that the board deny or at least withhold approval until the Leather District's health and safety concerns have been addressed by the applicant. That includes reducing the business operating hours to align with other neighborhood businesses, limiting smoking in public spaces, and preventing smokers from sitting on stoops where they block egress paths. I would also like to point out that the traffic study that was cited did not include the second floor meeting space, which the neighborhood was not alerted to until the licensing board hearing. Also, that traffic study was based on a one-hour evaluation of the neighborhood during a non-peak hour. And so that really didn't adequately, did not adequately address the issues of congestion and parking, which the neighborhood's really concerned about. Nobody benefits from a clog at Atlantic Avenue. So I'd encourage you, or I ask you to deny this application.
Okay, thank you.
I have no additional raised hands, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So the issue of hours was raised among all things. Can I have a motion, please?
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Oh, wait, wait. Is there another, is there another race?
Yes, Christie.
Yes, my name is, yes, I'm so sorry. My name is Christie Fried. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you. I am a business owner at 717 Atlantic Avenue, which is in a budding building to this proposal. First, I would like to disagree with Mr. Mezzing's statement that this location is not within a half mile of cannabis. It certainly is. Second of all, I'd like to point out to the board that the parking analysis that was done on this is on two one-way streets, and there are no metered parking spaces. It is residential only. This location is located directly across from the bus station. We already have a significant amount of problems with pickup and drop-off, and the business proposes that one vehicle be used with them for delivery. There is no place for that one vehicle to park on Beach Street or Atlantic Avenue. So that will be double parking from their proposed hours of 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, seven days a week. And quite frankly, I don't believe that 35 people can fit in that queue circle that was just presented to the board. So for these reasons, I ask that you oppose this proposition. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is that it in terms of race and span and investment?
Yes.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
I guess I was just talking to the board a little bit, maybe. I was contemplating a motion to defer this case. If it's truly outside of the buffer zone issues, I understand there's concern about the community, which I appreciate and respect. And I think that a deferral might be appropriate to extend the conversation with the community and see if they can get behind and also confirm some of the questions if it is indeed outside of the buffer zone.
Well, I would think that should be pretty easy to agree.
If I may, Mr. Acting Chair.
Yep.
So a bunch of the things that the opponents just said are not true.
I don't actually want to do a back and forth.
All right, let me talk about the law, then.
No, no, no. How, how, how?
What may be included here, sir?
Excuse me, Mr. Man. Just talk about the buffer zone.
Sure. We had the Fussin' O'Neill traffic study that included a buffer zone calculation. And that is reflected in the materials that the City of Boston has. The buffer zone, according to the Boston Cannabis Board, is measured as the pedestrian walks. As the crow flies, yes, it's just inside a half a mile. But there's no way to walk there or to drive to the nearest cannabis establishment, 21 Milk Street.
Okay. Okay, no, no, no. That clarifies the answer. That's why you can have both people saying yes and no because as the crow flies, it is. But as the walker goes, it's not. Okay, that was what I wanted to know. I, you know, I don't think we're going to get anything new information, Mr. Robinson, out of a deferral, to be honest with you.
That's fine.
So, all right, can I have a motion, please? I mean, if you want to make a motion for a deferral, that's obviously your intent. We're going to need a motion of some kind.
Again, I will offer a motion of deferral. It's per the case I've heard, to allow the proponent to work additionally with the community. I agree with some of the concerns on traffic, parking. This area is very dense. I appreciate that. Will they get to a resolution? That's on the proponent. That's not on me. But that is my motion.
Is there a second?
I would second that motion.
Okay. Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Better Veraza?
I oppose.
I oppose as well. I think we have as much information as we're going to get. So that's four in favor, two in opposition. The motion does not pass. So we'll need another motion. Which would either be for approval or denial.
I put forward a motion of approval with proviso that that basically manages in terms of time of operation and also provides some clear documentation in terms of how to navigate traffic concerns and also stoop concerns from the residents.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that, Secretary.
Okay. Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Nay.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Nay.
Ms. Better Veraza?
Yes.
I am also in favor, but that once again is forwarded to, so the motion does not pass, which means that the proposal. Pardon me?
Mr. Erlich, this is Tom. Could I suggest that the board vote on a motion without prejudice?
Yeah. I think that's, I think that would be appropriate. And so they can move.
Chair, I may. Four out of six members is a two-thirds vote.
No, you need five to pass. Five out of seven.
There are only six members, so the quantum of vote remains two-thirds. That's four out of six.
My statute is five, Mr. Manning.
My name is Mezzing, first of all, and 48,99 very clearly says two-thirds. So when there's a down a member, I'm a former municipal attorney. Four out of six.
Mr. Mezzing, this is Tom Broome. I'm the attorney for the board. 4 yay is not applicable statute in the City of Boston. Mr. Erlich is correct. His, thanks.
Sorry, mispronouncing your name. Okay. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to defer without prejudice.
Well, to defer? I mean, I'm sorry, deny. I'm sorry.
Nigh.
Without prejudice, okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Better Veraza?
Yes.
I oppose. I think it should have gone through, but that motion passes, so it's been denied without prejudice. Okay.
Mr. Chair, it's now 11:10. We're going to call the recommendations at 11:00. So we need a motion after a preliminary.
Sounds like a great idea.
These are the recommendations that were heard at 10:10 Mass Ave on September 15 at 5:00 PM, 2022. Case, sorry. Case BOA 13008906, Ruthman Street, was a red porch expansion. It was approved. Case BOA 1341439, 34 Halsey Street, was denied without prejudice. Case BOA 1344514, 24 Fairview Street, was a curb cut in access. It was approved. Case BOA 1344569145 Eustis Street, a single family, was approved. Case BOA 1345274, 11 Tappan Street, was to create flexible family space in existing garage in Bonner. It was approved. Case BOA 1349903, 144 Elmer Road, closing porch, back of house, install new footings. They were denied without prejudice. Case BOA 1350180108 Laurie Avenue, adding a driveway. The two parking spaces was approved. Case BOA 1352719, 168 Sycamore Street, installing a new shed dormer. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 1353576, 33 Augustus Avenue, legalized living space in the basement. It was approved. Case BOA 136070153 Cedar Grove Street, was demo existing deck. New addition, it was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 1361076, 81 Tin Dale Street, it was constructed, new shed dormers on both sides. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 1364671, 79 Brooksville Road, had two shed dormers. Case B O A one three six four six seven one seventy-nine Brooksville Road. They had two shed dormers. It was approved with B P D A. And on the rediscussion, B O A one two six five one five two ten Carson Street, which is an asphalt paving driveway, was deferred to October thirteenth at five P M. On the subcommittee. That concludes the subcommittee's report of September fifteen, two thousand twenty-two. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendations of the subcommittee.
Is there a second? Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Bedervarazza?
Yes.
And I am also in agreement. The motion passes.
Calling the next two cases for the ten thirty, calling case B O A one three five three three zero one six fifty-nine South Street. There's a companion case B O A one three five three three zero two six sixty-one South Street. This is for six fifty-nine. This combined existing lot has a two-car garage with four thousand eight hundred and twenty square feet. And the budding existing lot has a single-family dwelling with five thousand five hundred and eighty square feet into one lot revised at ten thousand three hundred and eighty square feet. And subdivided into two lots, this lot three A to have six thousand three hundred and forty-nine square feet direct a single-family dwelling with attached parking, remaining land, lot two A of four thousand thirty-one square feet, and existing garage to be raised. Violation to Article sixty-seven, section thirty-two, insufficient parking, Article sixty-seven, section nine, insufficient lot width, Article sixty-seven, section nine, insufficient lot frontage. This is for six sixty-one. This is the combined lot, existing single-family with five thousand five hundred and eighty square feet. The budding existing lot detached two-car garage with four thousand eight hundred and twenty square feet into ten thousand four hundred square feet. Violation to Article ten, section one. Limitation of area of accessory uses, Article sixty-seven, section nine, insufficient lot width, Article sixty-seven, section nine, insufficient usable open space, and Article sixty-seven, section nine, insufficient lot size. Name and address for the record, please.
Is Ivanon over applicant for representing him?
Is there anybody on for South Street, Rosendale?
I'm sure there's a raised hand here. One second. Gary, I just sent a request to unmute you. Are you here for this case?
Do we have an applicant?
We do have a raised hand here. Gary? See, he's saying we are here. I just made you a panelist. Once you accept that, can you unmute yourself and get started?
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you now. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Sorry, everybody. Gary Martel, live at fifteen Brownson Terrace in Jamaica Plain. I'm here with my partner on this job. He'll introduce himself.
I am in B C. I live at twenty-four Home and Burden and Walpole.
The proposal before the board today is we purchased this property in Rosendale approximately a year ago. It's two separate parcels, a little over either side of five thousand each for a total of about ten thousand four hundred square feet. It's in a two or five thousand neighborhood, requires five thousand for a single and eight thousand for a two-family dwelling. This property could, there's an existing single-family on the property. We went to the neighbors, had a meeting approximately nine months ago on a Saturday, an informal meeting, and told the people what wanted to know what they thought, that there would be two units there. Basically, the consensus was versus attaching a unit to the existing house, which could be done zoning compliant. We proposed to detach the unit, the single-family, and that's the proposal before you here today. We had a meeting, a formal meeting through Neighborhood Services. We've reached out to Haley Field Cummings Neighborhood Network, the Lower Washington Street Neighborhood Association. We've touched base with, believe we've done good community outreach. Two directive others to the left of the property and to the right of the property have submitted letters of support for this proposal.
Okay, as you know, Gary, we'll hear about the community support or.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we wanted to hear about the proposal.
Yeah. So we're proposing a single-family dwelling to the rear of the property. We were requested by I S D to submit. We had H S H, the traffic study group, submit a fire truck path analysis. Tom O'Donnell reviewed and approved that. So the proposal before you today has been, wasn't the original proposal, but through the butters and the neighborhood, this is the proposal before you today that they were happy with, I believe they were happy with, as a single-family dwelling in the position that it's in today.
Okay, so can you talk about the violations that this proposal encourages?
So the violation on number six fifty-nine, well, let's start with six sixty-one, which is the existing house, by the way. That, because the fire truck path analysis had to be right, so to speak, we adjusted that, too. The lot to the existing house for six sixty-one is approximately forty-five hundred square feet, plus or minus. We made improvements to that house. That house was in pretty rough shape. It was a single. Those improvements are complete. The violations, lot width and lot frontage on that, and then insufficient parking. We supplied two spaces. I'm sorry, I confused that with the other lot. We don't have insufficient parking on the existing single-family. We have two spaces. On the other lot, six fifty-nine on the new house, we have one garage space. So there's a violation because, again, two required parking spaces, which we could add another outside space from design review, I'm sure. And then same thing as the other one, lot frontage and lot width, dimensional requirements were the violations.
Okay, the six fifty-nine, the single-family, that parking is handled by an internal garage, right?
Correct.
Okay. And six sixty-one, can you scroll up the screen so we can just see? Leave it on the plot plan, no, the other direction, other direction. Okay, so the parking for six sixty-one is what?
To the right of the existing house. Yep.
Got it. And is that a new curb cut?
It's proposed new curb cut, yes. We're relocating one curb cut. It would propose a new curb cut.
Okay, how wide is that curb cut? That seems.
Twelve feet. On the existing house, it's twelve feet mark. On the new house, we proposed a smaller one. But again, Tom O'Donnell in the plans examine a wider space for fire truck access.
Okay, all right. And unit sizes?
The existing house is around twenty-one hundred, and the detached single-family on six fifty-nine is approximately twenty-two hundred.
Okay, and basement occupancy, it's all storage?
All storage, yep.
All right, how are the plans?
The plans for the proposed house, I really, no real questions. Garage is underneath. I get it. I guess a little bit more information on the fire truck access requirement. I just, I guess I should know this. I've been an architect for twenty-five years. I've never seen this requirement. But what is, because basically then you're required to pave the entire driveway, front yard, et cetera. Am I misreading the plans? And it looks like it's eighty-five feet from the curb line. I guess, can you just give us a little bit more information? Because I guess I do wonder about paving this twenty-foot swath from curb to house, basically, to provide the fire truck access.
Yeah, so I can only say that this is the second one I've been involved in, and I do agree with you. We have to create, again, I didn't design it, the Howard Stein Hudson did. But my understanding is we do have to have a hardscape there for the truck to do that. So I would think there's other options besides asphalt. And then that may be, we figured that it may be part of the design review branch, assuming this if approval be subject to design review by the B P D A. And we're obviously open to any alternative as far as whatever hardscape would be required to meet that fire access.
Okay, great. Thank you. I have not been an architect twenty-five years, but I've never heard of it either, Mr. Robinson. Okay, any questions on the board?
Can you speak to landscaping?
Um, I, well, Ivan Kin, you haven't done a plan yet for landscape.
Well, no, but on the existing, we're doing a stone wall. We're doing a fence. And we were thinking instead of all asphalt, because I don't like a lot of asphalt, we were gonna, you know, break it up with pavers, maybe a band of pavers at the front. And then around the existing house, we're gonna plant trees and shrubs to, you know, to soften it from one house to the other. And then on the driveway, we were, like I said, we were thinking of, but instead of doing all asphalt, we would do a band of pavers at the, or cobblestone at the, maybe up along the side of it, maybe along the front where it meets the sidewalk. And then maybe halfway up do another band, and then along the front of the house, just to break it up a small bit, that it's softened, you know?
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your question?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, any other questions? All right, is there anybody here who'd like to speak on behalf or in opposition to the proposal?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Ujra Nochi, and I am the Rosendale liaison with the mayor's office. We held a committee meeting for this project on August first. As you noted, he did hold an unofficial butters meeting where two of his neighbors attended, and they did also send in their letters of support. There were some concerns brought up over the garage that he mentioned. Only one person attended the butters meeting that my office held, and he did fly extra fifty feet to reach the other neighborhood association. He did also contact the closest neighborhood association to him, which was the Lower South Washington Street Neighborhood Association. And at this moment, the mayor's office would like to defer judgment to the board.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands for the moment.
Chair Erling, can I have, can I ask a question if the lot has been already subdivided?
Mr. Martel?
Yes, the lot currently is two separately assessed lots. The individual house at six sixty-one, it's a separately assessed lot, approximately fifty-six hundred square feet.
Right, but has it been subdivided already legally?
As far as the combining of the lots and the re-subdivision?
The re-subdivision, correct.
No, we wouldn't do that until we went, we would do that at the very end. That's a lot more to go before we do that. We need approval.
Okay.
Is that, okay. All right, can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion of approval with a proviseal to have B P D A design review on the site planning of the project to look at the division of the two parcels, to provide better location of the residential unit.
Can we also include forest or some kind of non-hardscape on the driveway?
Yes, we can also include a proviseal for imperious surface.
Okay.
Ms. Barazic, Jeff, when you say the location of the residential, you talk about the new house.
Then you, yeah, yeah.
Liberty to move it.
Well, if you notice, it wasn't discussed, but in the plot plan, there was a proposal for two side-by-side parking spaces. And that, you know, we were looking at this one proposal for this new residential. But it definitely had an effect on where parking and quantity in the adjacent house. So I think it needs B P D A design review to look at two proposals, the two, the two strategies for the site planning.
Okay, all right.
Is that clear, Mr. Hampton?
I think I understand what she's getting at. I just.
I mean, if you look, if you look at, if you look at the context, the way that the building is cited, doesn't necessarily make sense.
Right, but what I'm getting at is that if we have the ability to move things around, is it gonna force them to come back to you for board final arbiter? For new plans and such like that. That's what, I'm just trying to anticipate or understand if we have that responsibility. That's all.
Correct, okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, there's a motion made. Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Oh, Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Bedervarazza?
Yes.
The Chair of O T S two, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling B O A one three five three five seven zero forty-seven Nobill Avenue. This is an addition of a two-car garage at the rear of the building with an exterior deck connected to the second floor of an existing building. The violation is Article nine, section one, reconstruction extension of an unperformed building, Article sixty-five, section nine, site has insufficient, Article sixty-five, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Has applicant for Philip Lewis on? Can you raise your hand? Don't see anyone.
We'll come back to that. Calling the next case, calling B O A one three four four six nine four eighty-four Train Street. This didn't close the existing porch to become a sunroom. The violation to Article sixty-five, section nine, lot area is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, the floor ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, section nine, side yard, side yard is sufficient, and Article sixty-five, section nine, the rear yard is sufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Adam Jasper, fifty-three, Thomas Park, South Boston, representing Christopher Kyra of eighty-four Train Street.
Okay, can you describe your proposal?
Yes, Mr. Kyra would like to enclose an existing porch to become a three-season room. It's a hundred and thirteen square feet of floor area.
All right, and the, the violations that are cited, I assume that most of these are existing conditions?
Correct, all existing conditions.
Okay. Can we scroll through the drawings and just see if they're, see more? Yeah, okay. Okay, looks pretty straightforward. Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
Drawings are good, very straightforward, no further questions from me.
Just to the applicant, is this the homeowner's occupant? Is the homeowner the occupant?
Yes, he is.
Okay, again, I'm surprised it didn't go to subcommittee, but, okay. Any questions on the board? Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of our proposal to the project?
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. George Quinn with the mayor's office and Neighborhood Services. Our office was in the butters meeting for the proposal in July, and there are no concerns. At this time, our office will defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands.
All right, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Bedervarazza?
Yes.
And I approve also. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling, sorry, B O A one three four zero seven one four thirty-one Hazelton Street. This is to convert an existing two-family to a three-family. Violation to Article sixty, section nine, side yard is insufficient, Article sixty, section nine, usable space is insufficient, Article sixty, section forty, R Street parking is insufficient, and Article sixty-five, section sixty-eight, a three-family detached dwelling is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Timothy Burke. I'm the architect for the project. I have a business address of one forty-two Berkeley Street in Boston.
Okay, Mr. Burke, tell us about the proposal.
Yes, with me today is the owner who lives on the second floor, Marie Stenfill. She's here with me. Marie purchased this building in two thousand eighteen, and it looked like a three-family when she purchased it. It has all separate services, but I S D cited her for that use as a three-family. So we're looking to legalize that use. The third floor would be the additional unit, and it is already set up as a unit. It has two means of egress. And as part of this work, we would be installing a sprinkler system, which would help raise the level of safety for the building as well. In terms of the violations, the open space is not changing. It's around fifteen hundred square feet right now, and the zoning requires twenty-four hundred square feet. It's difficult to add a parking spot, but Marie would like to do that in the future, but can't afford to do that at this stage. And the side yard setback violation is for a very small roof. Two, covers a door to the basement that they had problems with flooding there. So this roof has stopped that flooding. They did build the roof without a permit. And so we're looking to also legalize that as well.
Okay, so it's currently being used as a three-family?
No, it's being used as a two-family. I S D was very clear not to use the third floor as a, so that's not rented as an apartment at the moment. But she would like that ability, yes.
Okay, and how is it assessed?
Two-family. It's a two-family in the rolls, yes.
Okay, and how are the utilities set up? Is it to accommodate a third unit already, or do you have to change that?
No, it's already set up with separate meters and heating and everything, yes.
Okay, so there's really, with respect to the, the proposal, there's really very little change in the, in the drawings, correct?
That is correct. There's no changes proposed to the exterior, and Marie does a very nice job of taking care of the house. And she's done extensive outreach with the community as well and has great support.
Okay, well, that's, we'll find that out separately. Okay, so, so it's currently being inhabited as a two-family, but you're saying it's completely set up without any changes to function as a three-family?
With the exception of adding a sprinkler system.
Okay, well, that's.
That would be required by the code, yes.
Yeah, okay, okay. All right, Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
The drawings are good. No questions. The house is beautiful. I don't have any issue with legalizing or whatever. Confirming the small roof protecting the basement either. I think it's very minimal in terms of that, if that's part of this as well. So no real questions for me. Thanks.
Okay, any questions on the board? All right, is there anyone here to speak on behalf or in opposition proponent?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Eric James of the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant for thirty-one Hazelton had a butters meeting on August tenth. They also met with the Wellington Hill Neighborhood Association, which ultimately voted to support their project. We have received one letter of support and zero letters of opposition for this project. And at this time, the mayor's office would like to defer the judgment of the board on this matter. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Secretary, we do have that one letter. The mayor's office just spoke of.
Okay. Anybody else in that ambassador?
Do you have a raised hand, Fatima? Go ahead, please.
Good morning, Fatima Alisal, thirty-four Bremer Street, Chair, Greater Manhattan Neighborhood Council. I met with via Zoom, Mr. Burke, and reviewed the plans with him. And I also went on the site to look at the home, and I concur that the plans, as they appear, are correct and are factual. And we support this project.
Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I will make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Bedervarazza?
Yes.
And I, too, am in support. The motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna call the eleven thirty. Would you like to do your comment?
I can't wait, Mr. Fortune. For all of those who have not yet heard me say this, this is a six-member board today. We ordinarily, the full board is seven members, which means that if you wish, you can ask for an administrative deferral without explanation until a full board can be scattered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna call the eleven thirty. It's now eleven thirty-seven. I'm gonna call the rediscussions. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for the rediscussions for eleven thirty? If you can give me the address for us.
Thirteen ninety-five Washington Street, Mr. Fortune.
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
Thirteen ninety-five to fourteen oh five Washington.
Regarding B O A one two nine eight one three three thirteen ninety-five to fourteen oh five Washington Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mark Lacass, Lacass Law, seventy-five Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the applicant. At this time, we would seek an administrative deferral to the November one date, please.
Well, we'll see what we can do with dates, but you're seeking an administrative deferral. Can I have a motion?
Sure.
Motion to defer. Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Bedervarazza?
Yes.
And I, too, am in favor. The motion passes.
Mr. Lacass, Weirton, November fifteenth at eleven thirty.
Okay, thank you, Stan.
Are there any other deferrals? Address, please.
Forty-seven forty-eight Snow Hill Street.
For the record, calling B O A one two eight three two nine four forty-seven to forty-eight Snow Hill Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago, Drago and Toscano with business address of eleven Beacon Street. We are seeking an administrative deferral for the mentioned matter for a full board.
Motion to defer? Second.
Okay, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Bedervarazza?
Yes.
And I, too, am in favor. The motion passes.
Are there any other deferrals and withdrawals? I'm sorry, it's November fifteenth at eleven thirty. I'm getting ahead of myself.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary.
Are there any other deferrals and withdrawals for the eleven thirties?
Forty-five Milton Avenue.
Thank you, Counselor. Hold on two seconds. Case B O A one two three six zero eight four forty-five Milton Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams and Marancy, business address of one sixty-eight Eighth Street, first floor, South Boston. We're here seeking an administrative deferral.
Can I have a motion?
Motion to defer. Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Bedervarazza?
Yes.
I, too, am in favor. The motion passes.
You'll have a date of eleven fifteen at eleven thirty.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the eleven thirty rediscussions? Mr. Chair, we do have a withdrawal. So I'm gonna call it into the record, calling B O A one two eight nine four five four four Cherokee Street. We have a letter from counsel. They're withdrawing. I'm making a motion for denial without prejudice.
I'll second that. Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Miss Peñano?
Yes.
Miss Don?
Yes.
Miss Better Baraza?
Yes.
And I too am in favor, the motion passes.
Mr. Chair, the next four cases, they're pretty lengthy. I just want to make sure that nobody's going to recuse themselves before I read it into the record and the people are going to move forward. Is the proponent going to move forward on this project? Yes, we are. Okay, thank you. Calling the next four cases, for the record, calling BOA 1341518, 1105 Harrison Avenue. There are three companion cases, BOA 13415241121 Harrison Avenue. Case BOA 13415282154 Washington Street. Case BOA 13415382196 Washington Street. This is for 1105 Harrison. This is construct new detached three-story collage art studio with common roof deck. This is one building of four. The violation is Article 50, Section 11, excessive FAR. Article 50, Section 11, building height is excessive. Article 50, Section 11, rear yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 44.3, the traffic visibility across the corner. This is for 1121 Harrison, constructing new four-story artist housing, contain 15 units. Violation Article 50, Section 10, MFR basement in first, the use is conditional. Article 50, Section 10, an artist mixed-use basement in first floor is conditional. Article 50, Section 10, artist mixed-use second and above is use is conditional. Article 50, Section 11, the excessive FAR. Article 50, Section 11, building height is excessive. Article 50, Section 11, rear yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 40.1, the street wall continuity. And Article 50, Section 44.1.3, two or more dwellings on the same lot. Mr. Chair, would you like to do these two at this time, or would you like to do all four at once?
Let's do all four at once. I think this is an integrated proposal.
Okay. This is for 2154 Washington Street. This is to construct a new three-story cultural hall to include the following uses, concert hall, art galleries, outdoor recreation, for profit, and bars in first and second level. Violation Article 50, Section 10, a bar in the second story above is forbidden. Article 50, Section 10, the concert hall, second story above, the use is conditional. Article 50, Section 10, outdoor place of recreation for profit, use is conditional. Article 50, Section 10, the bar and basement in the first story, use is conditional. Article 50, Section 11, excessive FAR. Article 50, Section 11, the building height is excessive. Article 50, Section 40.1, street wall continuity. And Article 50, Section 44.1.3, two or more dwellings on the same lot. This one's a little lengthy, so bear with me. Regarding 2196 Washington Street, construct a new seven-story mixed-use building, core and shelter, to include the following uses, culinary market, food market, demonstration takeout, kitchen, community center, outdoor recreation, level two restaurant with takeout and entertainment. Levels two to seven office, research and development, scientific lab, light manufacturing, parking garage. Garage is an attached five-story above grade, one-story below grade structure. Loading dock is attached one-story structure. Violation Article 50, Section 10, levels two to seven light manufacturing, use is forbidden. Article 50, Section 10, the parking garage basement first level, use is conditional. Article 50, Section 10, the parking garage second story above, use is conditional. Article 50, Section 10, ancillary parking, use is conditional. Article 50, Section 10, level one large restaurant with takeout, culinary market, use is conditional. Article 50, Section 10, level one bar, use is conditional. Article 50, Section 10, outdoor place of recreation for profit, use is conditional. Article 50, Section 10, level two restaurant with takeout, use is conditional. Article 50, Section 10, level two restaurant with entertainment, use is conditional. Article 50, Section 10, levels two to seven research and development, use is conditional. Article 50, Section 10, level two to seven accessory scientific laboratory, use is conditional. Article 50, Section 11, excessive FAR. Article 50, Section 11, building height is excessive. Article 50, Section 11, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 40.1, street wall continuity. And Article 50, Section 44.1.3, two or more dwellings on the same lot. Name and address for the record, please.
Well done, Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, I need to get some water now.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Taylor, 2164 Washington Street, Roxbury, representing the dominant team.
Tell us, it's an ambitious and complicated proposal, so try to give us an overall picture, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not going to repeat the entire program. I will say we have been given a tentative designation by BPDA for this dynamic project. We have also received Article 80B, large project approval already. We've come today really after significant time with the community to seek variances in order to build this transformative mixed-use project. Economic development will occur for the community, job creation, wealth creation, a dedicated parking structure, and homeownership for arts. What I would like to do is turn the presentation over to Mr. Julio Gavara from Stantec to review the details, your permission?
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Julio Gavara, 40 Water Street, Stantec Architecture in Boston. As you can see here on the screen, the current site is an empty lot. It's a parking lot with existing empty lots. Our proposal here is not to renovate any of the existing buildings, but instead to propose new buildings, five buildings in total over two separate lots. The building in the foreground here is a seven to eight-story office, lab training, as well as a culinary marketplace building. Behind that, building number seven, is a parking garage along Harrison Street. There is a 15-unit condo building on the corner of Eustis and Harrison, a three-story artist lab building. And then on Washington Street, building number five, is a cultural hall performance space. If you can go to the next slide, please. Or if I could share my screen. Yep. So this building, as I mentioned before, it's an office-lab-training building. We are working partnership with local community organizations in terms of getting lab-training exposure to the residents of the area. The intended lab-training uses include robotics, dry research, and material sciences. The intent is not for this building to have heavy chemistry or biological program types. The first two floors of the building are...
Before you go any further, it looks, can you go back to that? Yeah, it looks like the sort of building, there's a whole plaza that's elevated, is that right? Is that part of the design?
Right, part of the design also includes a plaza along Washington Street, yep.
But it's, but it looks like it's not along Washington Street, it's elevated, the lab building. Am I reading the rendering wrong?
Well, the space that you're talking about, Mr. Chairman, is really a restaurant space. It's not lab training. Lab training will be in the office building itself.
No, 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 I get, I get, but there's like a stone retaining wall from the street going up?
That is correct.
Yeah, the first two floors of the building you see on the screen are intended for a culinary marketplace, where you start to see the brick color on the facade. Floors three and above is where we would have the office and lab-training uses.
And again, I don't want to get hung up on this, but what is behind the retaining wall? What is that, what's the inside of that? Is that under the plaza there where the restaurant is, where the tables are? You see what I'm trying to, I'm just trying to understand. You've got a retaining wall that elevates the whole building.
It's a culinary market, Mr. Chairman. Pop-up businesses, a test kitchen for people, yeah, that's what.
Okay, so that's just commercial space?
That is, I'm sorry, thank you, that helps, that's the picture right there.
All right, I was reading the rendering wrong. It looked like it was like stone or something. Okay, thank you, all right, sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
All right. Yeah, this slide is the culinary marketplace meant to have integration with the community, have vendors come and do artist stalls, as well as a test kitchen, and really activate and provide a dynamic space for the community right off the plaza. We'll go to the next slide, please. This is a cross-section from Washington Street to Harrison Avenue, left to right. On Washington Street is the culinary marketplace lab-training building. Directly adjacent to it is a garage with vendor stalls. And then along Harrison Avenue, there is the artist housing building. I should mention that this whole length, there is a grade difference between Washington and Harrison Ave. And the proposal intends to provide an accessible means of travel from Washington Street to Harrison Avenue with a slightly sloped grade to be able to achieve that. You can go to the next slide, please. Along Harrison Avenue, we have a four-story apartment building, condos, 15 units, ten of which are proposed as affordable. And the intent is for the design of this building to mimic the adjacent architecture so that it fits well into the community and the elevation of Harrison Ave.
These are artist units, we have to reinforce that. A part of our hope here is with this Roxbury Cultural District is to give artists, community-based artists, ownership of their property so they don't get kicked out in five years, like that's happened in many other places across the city.
If we could go to the next slide, please. This is the corner of Harrison Avenue and Eustis Street. Shown here is a three-story artist lab building, intended for the local community artists to have space where they could do either digital technology, or painting, or et cetera, other uses as well. Next slide, please. Lastly, this is back over on Washington Street, a cultural hall performance space. This is the beacon of the project, intended to provide space for local artists to display their work, as well as have performances and engage the community, provide them a space to have performances and such.
One of the examples, members of the board, is that the Roxbury Film Festival, in its 20th year, hosts most of its showings at the Museum of Fine Arts, because there's no place in Roxbury to host this facility. That will change when we build this Performance Arts Center.
In terms of the site plan, significant improvement to the perimeter of the entire block. There are some anticipated City of Boston improvements shown in yellow along Washington Street. But the entirety of the area shown in red and green are sidewalk pedestrian improvements proposed by this project, all along Washington Street, Harrison Ave, and a focus along Eustis Street as well, and having that be a pedestrian-friendly zone across the historic firehouse and cemetery. Next slide, please. Lastly, this is just a couple of images of what anticipated uses ever at the plaza. Currently, you know, we're thinking about, we're thinking about this project as putting the square back in Uvian Square, having a place where people can assemble outside and integrate with the activity that's happening within the culinary marketplace, whether that be in the spring, or the fall, or the winter, having multi-use, all-year access to the plaza.
Right now, members of the board, the square opens at 7:30 and shuts down around 2:30 or 3:00. No nighttime activity, better weekend activity. Our goal is to change that substantially.
Next slide, please. Richard, I'll let you speak to this slide.
Sure. In addition to the construction and permanent jobs, one of our main goals is to create jobs for the students at Madison Park, John D. O'Brien, Dearborn STEM, Ben Franklin. So training is very important. We have a significant relationship on the construction side with Consigliere and Smoot to ensure local hiring as well. And we felt it was very important to allow neighborhood residents to be able to invest in this project. And so we're hoping to raise money from the local community and our minimum shares of $1,000 be paid over time. We want this to be owned not by just the development team, but by the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard, next slide, please. This next series of slides have all the details. I'm not going to read all the numbers, but if you go to the next slide, it's, it's, the first slide is a list of the violations, and then the second slide has the metrics of each building, including the area and FAR proposed. First one here is for the lab-training office building. And then the next five pages of the presentation also include the metrics for the other buildings as well.
Keep going. You got to call the next slide.
Next slide. So this is the 15-unit apartment building. As noted here on the metrics, proposed FAR and the list of violations as indicated here. And if we go to the next slide as well, artist lab building, again, the list of violations and the proposed metrics for the project. And lastly, if we go to the next slide, the cultural hall as well. List of violations and the proposed metrics for the projects.
Next slide. This is really the kind of public activity that's happened in the square by Black Market, in particular, Kai Grant and Chris Grant. And we hope to really make this a permanent part of the square. What you see at the left is some artwork that's been done by Pro Black there, celebrating some of our artists on the Uvian Gala. Next slide, please. And that's it. Thank you very much for, I know this was a lot. We're excited about it, and I'll turn it over to those who want to speak and whatever your next process is. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I understand it was a lot, because it's a pretty ambitious and transformative project that you guys are proposing, so I have a bunch of questions, and I will then ask the architecture to review. The parking garage holds how many cars?
Approximately 300.
300, okay. And on the, you said the 15 units of the condos in 10 are affordable?
Yes, that's correct.
And will that, is there a way that that beated to stay that way?
Absolutely. It's, they will be permanently beated, and as we said, we can't direct it for artists, but we have a priority for artists.
Well, that was my next question, which is how are you doing that? Because that's, this has come up in other situations where we have, I'm curious as to what mechanisms you're going to use to try to make sure that happens.
Right, what we have done is has held several charrettes to talk about two things. Talk about the design of the unit, so that artists in the area, and particularly those who were part of the Northeastern Cole Hart and JP, who no longer there. A number of artists also from the Piana Factory, who are no longer there. Boston Center for the Arts. So we've been working with a cohort of artists, making them aware of what's coming on board and talking to them about financing.
Okay, so this is more of an informal thing, as opposed to having provisions in the leases or in the condo box?
Fair marketing provisions won't allow that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, okay. All right, well, some people have done some things that have been legal anyway. All right, the performance space, how big?
Just over 300. Just over 300 seats as well.
Okay, and what other kinds, besides the Roxbury Film Festival, what other kinds of events do you anticipate being there?
Oh, boy, we anticipate working with the Boston Public Schools. We hope to have talent contests, church choirs, the Oscar Me Show, performance theater, and go on and on and on. We also just, we want that to be a seven-day-a-week activity, giving young people a chance to perform. We've also been talking to Origination, Jose Mateos Dance Group. Those are some of the organizations. In fact, just recently, last week, we hired a very talented woman from the Newark Symphony to come and head this particular part of our project. So we're very excited about what this is going to provide.
Okay. All right, Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
Well, I spent my Sunday going through this, and, and, uh, thank you very much for bringing...
Only one day?
Not only one day.
More than unusual set of drawings, right?
So, oh, you know, I guess I'm probably a little bit speechless, because I think as an outgoing member of the zoning board, you know, this is one of the reasons I wanted to be on the board, to do my little part to help projects as ambitious as this, to create, I think, an amazing urban space in our city. I think you guys have done a great job of addressing the edges of the site, as well as the porosity of the site. And I, you know, I think it's amazing, and I'm excited to be here and see this come through on my way. through on my watch, I guess, and look forward to seeing it move into fruition. I think you guys have done an amazing job. I've sort of followed it along a little bit as it's moved through its process and, you know, as far as my zoning questions, I really have none. I think that the proposal has addressed in terms of its response to the zoning violations in a nice way. And I really commend the team and I appreciate you guys coming forth with this project. And no further questions.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Any other questions on the board?
I just want to also sort of applaud the vision and the really excellent design and thoughtfulness of the proposal. I do have a question about access to the parking garage. Is that, is all access off of Eustace Street?
Yes, it is. Everything is off Eustace Street, Ms. Benado.
Which is, you know, it's not a long street, but your traffic folks have looked at that and sort of deemed that the best area to access parking?
Yes, it's a good question. The big thing about Eustace though is it does not have a residential face to it. So, we're not going to be confronted with residents who are trying to get in and out. But we spend a lot of time with the BPA folks on entrances and exits. And anything else, Harrison, Washington, it would really create a nightmare.
Yeah.
So, it's going to work out pretty good. Thank you.
And then, and you're coordinating with, I'm familiar with Bfits.
Oh, yeah.
New building across the street. And they also want to access their automotive and other uses off of Eustace Street.
Yes, we are, we are working very closely with them. As a matter of fact, their lab training will be done in our facility. I work with Ayesha almost every other day. We are very excited about them as a neighbor and their 68,000 square foot footprint as well. Thank you.
Yeah, terrific. Both, both great projects to see. Any interest in the lab? Any leasing to date?
Yeah, well, what we're doing is Ben Franklin and ourselves applied to Mass Life Sciences and received a $750,000 lab equipment grant. We're also working with Mass Bio Ed and we are also working with Roxbury Community College and we're also working with GMGI as a series of trainers. Northeast University has a very large lab in Burlington and they're going to take that same lab and put it in our space. And we're also talking to hospitals as well as the BPS. BPS is looking to replace all their parking spaces, as you know, as well as talking to us about some possible space. So, I would say even as we speak today, we are probably three, almost four floors accounted for. And we're working pretty hard on that.
Terrific. No more questions.
Any other questions on the board?
Yes, I have maybe one major question. I echo the other board members as well that this is an amazing, ambitious project for the community with lots of community benefits. And I'm interested in the community benefit aspects. One is sustainability. That wasn't really mentioned in terms of goals. If you can comment, what are you striving for in terms of sustainability performance on the overall complex? That's one. The other, the other question is, you talked about minority MBE kind of partnerships in the construction and I would be curious to know what goals you strive for in terms of the design, design team, you know, so from the beginning to the end, what was the overall kind of MBE participation for the project? And then lastly, in terms of community benefits, it was nice to see that you have institutional partners, but I would like to know what types of programs you're allocating for locally Black and Brown-owned businesses in terms of contract opportunities for them as well, you know, within the Roxbury community.
Sure. I'm going to let the architects talk about sustainability because we've done quite a bit on that. But I'll give you an example, it's a great question, on the garage. Privet Parking is a small, really valet parking company. And we are giving them their first opportunity to joint venture with a larger parking company so that they can in fact get into the parking business. We are very excited about that piece. United Housing Management, which now manages the Boulding Building, Roxbury-based property management firm, will manage this entire complex. And I could go on with several others. So, we've worked very hard to make sure that MWBEs from the community have an opportunity to really, not just do some work, but do something different and elevate themselves. Again, the parking is very important. The rendering that you saw in the culinary is all about local small businesses coming in with pop-up businesses, testing their food concepts, testing their product concepts prior to being available to do fixed retail. So, that's also a part of what we're doing. And equally, it's smart on the construction side. We are well aware that a lot of local minority contractors who don't have opportunities, we're working closely to ensure with Consigliere and Smoot that that happens. I'll turn it over for sustainability to Julio and tomorrow some others.
Thank you for the question. In terms of sustainability, we are meeting and exceeding the requirements from the Article 37 process with the city in terms of sustainability. The artist housing in particular is proposed as a passive house building. As you may have noticed in one of the renderings, we are also proposing an extensive solar array above the garage that will provide electrification for the EV chargers that will be inside the garage. The garage will be planned for 100% capacity for EV charging with 25% on day one, as well as the integrated MEP design between the Culinary Marketplace Lab Building, ensuring those services across to the cultural hall and streamlining the amount of MEP that would be designed for the project as well.
You had asked directly about the, the design team diversity. And I would say, I mean, it's been wonderful working with these clients and that diversity has been absolutely at the foremost of their minds for every single choice they've made. And I know Stantec is not, you know, Stantec's not an MWBE, but for our team, we have chosen women of people of color to represent us on this project. And then we also have collaborated with Dream Collaborative, with Studio NA, with Ground Inc., all minority MWBE firms. So, and we have, again, as we go down the consultant list, it was a question, every, every choice was can we use a diverse team? So, it's very much in the forefront of the project.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions on the board? Or is anybody who wants to speak on behalf or in opposition to the project in the public?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Keisha Santana from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicants met with the butters on July 28th. There wasn't any attendance, but there wasn't any comments from community in terms of necessarily support or opposition. But when mentioned in community about this project, there has been some excitement that there's going to be something done within the lot that hasn't been really used much. I'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Let's keep the number of commenters down and please don't repeat yourself. I think there's a pretty strong sense of where we're going with this project, so let's, let's move forward.
Rep. Santana?
Great. I'll be very brief. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thanks for the opportunity to testify. I'm State Rep. John Santiago. I cover the area. I represent it. I also live about 20 minutes from it, walking and jog the front of Washington pretty much every morning. And just to be quite plain here, this project is really about creating a transformative cultural center in the heart of Black Boston, but one that will also, I think, provide a tremendous amount of economic development for the future. As many people on this call note, there's a significant gap disparity when it comes to economic development in the city, and this is going to be doing something against that. Let me also mention that in the few meetings that I've participated in with my community members, there's been strong support of this project. So, zoning relief is going to be key in terms of ensuring that this project gets off the ground for the Performance Arts Center, for something I care very much about, the New Being Square Life Science Center as a position myself, trying to get more Black and Brown folks in the healthcare industry, in the science field. This, projects like this are going to help do that. So, I respectfully urge full support for this project and look forward to collaborating. Thank you very much.
Councilman Fernandez-Anderson?
Hi, my name is Stephen Renee. I'm representing Councilor Tanya Fernandez-Anderson's office of District 7, and I want to read a letter of support.
Can you summarize it? Can you, we're really running short on time. Can you summarize the letter?
Okay. Councilor Fernandez-Anderson fully supports this project in order to turn the long neglected lot into a community center that will benefit all of D7 and Boston at large. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
John, what was that?
Yes. Hello, everyone. Representing Mayor's Office of Housing, we've worked closely with the Roxbury Strategic Master Plan Oversight Committee and the BPA in this integrated plan. We fully support the project. Thank you.
Robert George? Hi, Robert. I sent a request in to you.
Sure. Thank you. Robert George, Executive Director of Roxbury Main Streets. It is with significant enthusiasm that we support this project and a sense of pride, as we heard from the many speakers per hour before me. This includes the marketplace, the culinary market, the artist residency, the opportunity for small business within the square. And I must say, this is one of the most anticipated projects in Nubian Square because it's going to transform a lot that has been neglected for a number of years. One of the things that's most exciting for me as well is the 300 public parking space because right now we had to drink a run of parking in Nubian Square and this is going to just add to it. I must say, of all the work projects we're working on throughout the square, this one project has the most public support, most enthusiasm, and folks are looking forward to getting started, which will transform Nubian Square to where we all know it can be. So, I urge support and approval of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two more race hands. Will we keep going? Okay, go to Joe. Go ahead, Mr. Feaster.
Thank you very much, Madam Ambassador, members of the board. I am wearing my hat as chairman of the Board of the Urban League of Eastern Massachusetts, which is located in Nubian Square and 88 Warren Street. I am so pleased to speak in favor of this project, not only because of the developer and his vision, he is not only my fraternity brother, but he is also a past chair of the Urban League of Eastern Massachusetts. This project is going to be transformative. When I was with the interim director at the Boston Housing Authority, which is right adjacent to where this lot is, we always looked upon this lot as something which we wanted to have developed. What has been created here is just, is going to be transformative. It is going to make changes within the community. It is going to add vibrancy and I urge the board to vote in favor of this, the request for barriers. Thank you.
Mayra Perez, Boston?
Afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mayra Perez, representing the Carpenters Union. On behalf of hundreds of union members from the Carpenters Union, I want to go and represent strong support and kudos to the developer for a great outreach to the community and hanging in the accurate review process. Great job. It's about time to see something like this happen in Roxbury. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I have no additional race hands.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Solomon, City Council Archimacral Prior to work in support.
Okay, thank you. I don't really think that we have much question which way this is going, so I think I'm happy to end the testimony and ask for a motion.
I'd be honored to make a motion to approve this project with the BPA Design Review.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Benado?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Better Varaza?
Yes, yes, yes.
Oh, that makes eight. So, we're over our limit. Anyway, I, the chair concurs, this is, I think, one of the reasons, as Mr. Robinson said, why we all want to, you know, want to play a role in this board and transforming the city. This is a really exciting project. Congratulations to the development team.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We very much appreciate your support. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now, it is 12:15. We haven't had a break. We need a break. I also am cognizant of the fact that Ms. Better Varaza has a hard stop at 1:15. So, what I'm going to suggest, Mr. Fortune, is that we read one project out of order because that's one that she has to do the plans because Mr. Robinson's recusing himself and then we take a 15-minute break. So, that, that project is 555-567 East Broadway. I just want to make sure we get that before she has to leave.
Yep, no problem. We're calling in the next case. BOA 136-1240, 555 to 567 East Broadway. This is to raise the existing single-story commercial structure, erect a new four-story residential building with six townhouse dwelling units. Violation Article 68, Section 34.1, conforming with an existing building alignment. Article 68, Section 34.2, carpet visibility across the corner. Article 68, Section 8, the floor ratio is excessive. Article 68, Section 8, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 68, Section 8, front yards insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the side yards insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the rear yards insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8, the additional lot area is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
As noted, Eric Robinson, we were accusing myself from this case.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Pooch Baranci, an attorney with the business address 350 West Broadway in South Boston. This is an application for a new four-story residential building to contain six townhouse style condominium units. The site consists of 6,050 square feet of currently vacant land at the corner of East Broadway and 8th Street in South Boston, located within a multifamily residential local service dwelling sub-district. The site was previously occupied by a single-story commercial building with service parking. Each unit here would be a three-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bath unit, approximately 2,516 square feet. Again, these would be six townhouse units. Each would be served by a ground-level rear garage accessed by means of a single curb cut and driveway in the rear of the site, accessed by means of a curb cut on the 8th Street side of the site where that existing curb cut would be reduced from its current size. With respect to the zoning relief being sought, the building would have a three-foot front setback, whereas the existing alignment of East Broadway is a zero-foot modal. The setback will allow for modest front landscape area. There is a zero-foot alignment on the 8th Street side of the building, which since this is a corner lot, is treated for zoning purposes as a front setback. The result is that the examiner cited the front and side setbacks twice, one for the dimensions and one for conformity with existing building alignment. The right side of the building would replicate the previously existing condition of no setback on the site attached to a set of commercial buildings. A variance is being sought for excessive floor area ratio. The proposed FAR is 2.79 whereas the zoning maximum in this MFR L S sub-district is 1.5. The maximum building height under zoning is 35 feet, whereas being proposed is 39 feet 6 inches. Both the building's height and density are very consistent with surrounding conditions in the neighborhood. A variance is required for the lot area required for a six-unit building under zoning a capacious 10,000 square foot lot is required, whereas the lot here is a reasonable 6,050 square feet. Finally, there is violation for street corner visibility. This is mitigated by the fact that 8th Street is a one-way street from East Broadway, a condition which reduces if not eliminates any potential for traffic conflict owing to the building's quarter setback. And I would point out that this project began as an Article 80 small project but was greatly reduced in scope during public review. As a result, the BPA has in fact reviewed the current six-unit plans. I'll pause and take any questions that the board may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baranci. The, you said that the building has the setback that's not comparable to modal so that there can be some landscaping at the sidewalk level, but those bay windows are essentially equivalent to modal, right, in terms of the relation to the street, the sidewalk and street?
Yes, approximately. That is correct.
Okay. And on the entrance, 8th Street, on the, can you walk us through it again? So, you So you enter a curb cut on H Street, and then there are separate entrances in the rear to each of the parking spaces?
That's correct. And the landscape that's being shown now illustrates that. So there would be, as I say, a greatly reduced curb cut. About half the site now on H Street is currently a curb cut. That would be reduced to a standard residential curb cut and driveway, which would lead to the back. And then there's a bit of excavation so that the garages are partially below grade, and each would be a two-car garage in the back of each unit with space in the front obviously leading up to, up to the ground floor level. And these would be tri-level, tri-level townhouses, not including the basement.
Okay. And maneuverability, is that, that something that you are comfortable with?
We are. And as I noted, the plans were reviewed by that market, BPDA. And BPDA, to my knowledge, is satisfied with, with site maneuverability for the parking.
Okay. All right. Ms. Better Veraza, how are the plans?
Chair Erlich, the plans are adequate.
No comments, questions?
No, it's pretty, it's pretty direct.
Yeah.
It's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Any, any questions on the board? All right, is there anybody here to speak on behalf of, either on behalf or in opposition to the project?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Anna Wade with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Originally, the proponent had proposed a mixed-use multifamily building, which was subject to Article 80 of the zoning code, and BPDA review and approval. There was resistance in the community owing to the project's size and density. Acting upon advice and recommendations from the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association, the proponent changed direction and opted for townhouse-style units. ONS held in a Butters meeting on that plan for 555 through 5567 East Broadway on June 25th. We perceived no letters of opposition to the project, and the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association and the Dorchester Heights Neighborhood Association are in support of this proposal. At this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Anna Caleron from Council President Flynn's office. The council will like to home recordings of in support based on feedback from neighbors and the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association. The proponent conducted a two-community process which resulted in good faith compromises such as the reduction, reducing the density of the original proposal of 14 units down to six. Moreover, the six units will include a total of 12 parking spots and two per unit to account for the existing parking crisis in South Boston. Lastly, the proponent removed roof debt proposals after hearing from neighbors about existing quality of life issues associated with them. This alleviated concerns about loud parties and all hours and trash removal issues. Council President Flynn hopes that this project can be approved due to the good community process and good faith compromises with the neighbors and civic groups on their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan, City Council Archimichael Flaherty. Although the council's stance towards Article 68 has remained consistent, there are, there are projects that you have merit. The report in this particular case has been supported of the South Boston theory. Worked well with neighbors in the concerns on this project in the council would defer to the board.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have no raise hands.
All right, can I have a motion, please?
Chair Erlich, did BPDA comment on the proposal? Hampton, did you comment on that?
Yeah, we recommend approval with design review.
Okay.
You want to make a motion?
Sure. I would like to make a motion of approval with both BTD review on the access to the parking spaces and BPDA design review specifically to the exterior. The massing looks, looks a little bit repetitive, so it would be nice for the BPDA to review the exterior.
Okay, can I have a second on that?
Second.
All right. Go through the routine, Mr. Fortune.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson? No, he's, I'm sorry, Ms. Genado?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Better Veraza?
Yes.
And I too in approval so that the motion carries. So it is now 12:25. In order to take best use of Ms. Better Veraza's time, let's, let's pause for 15 minutes and reconvene at 12:40.